This meeting of the Waynesboro City Council, Vice Mayor Henderson, would you read us a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. A reminder those in attendance that if you'd like to speak, we've got a sign up sheet in the back, and you're welcome to sign up and do so. Also, just for crowd management a little bit, Mr. Jude and Mr. Shaw here have been kind enough to, we've got some front row seats that we'd love for you to be comfortable throughout the meeting tonight, so appreciate your attendance. The first item on business is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Great, thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0, thank you. Number three are matters from council members. Does any of my colleagues have anything they'd like to share this evening?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first thing I wanted to do is welcome the scouts from Troop 73, lots of faces out there I recognize. They are here this evening working on their citizenship and the community merit badge, and so this is a great chance for them to see civic engagement and how adults can talk and discuss important matters in the public setting. So sit around and look at the scouts around you and welcome them too. The second thing I wanted to add was that I had a great meeting last Tuesday, was my monthly meeting. I had a number of folks that came out, we actually met in this room because the French press was closed that day, talking about some of the matters we're going to be talking about tonight. So it was a good chance to hear from other folks and learn what's on people's mind. So, thank you very much.
Great.
I just want to talk about, it's been a busy couple of weeks for everybody on council, but I want to talk about how busy it's been for our city employees also. The school board on September 23 recognized Teacher of the Year for each one of our schools here in Waynesboro, and I want to congratulate Kelly Spence from Berkeley Glen for receiving Teacher of the Year of that school, Breenfield of Winona Elementary School, Megan Broats of Westwood Hills, Rebecca Anderson of William Perry, Erin Widener of Waynesboro High School, and each one of these teachers were selected by their peers to be Teachers of the Year for that particular school. And then Teacher of the Year was selected for Kate Collins, and she was also Teacher of the Year for all the school divisions, or all the schools in the city, and that's Catherine Stavey from Kate Collins. So I want to thank all the teachers, all of our teachers, whether you're Teacher of the Year or not, you play a very important role to our city, you teach our kids, you show our kids what they're supposed to be knowing and how to get ahead in life. So thank you to all the school teachers, thank you to the Teachers of the Year. Also, on May 1, Waynesboro Police Department conducted promotions of two of their officers, and they have a very strenuous process where they select candidates for promotion, and then those candidates have to do certain things and be interviewed and pass the interview in order to get promotion. And this year, this past promotion, Officer Jamie Dunn, who was a patrol officer, was promoted to Patrol Shift Corporal, and Corporal Chris Cross, who was a Patrol Shift Corporal, was promoted to Patrol Shift Sergeant. So job well done to those police officers and all the Waynesboro Police Department for doing a great job. And then one last thing, on May 4, we had River Fest, and that's something that's sponsored by our Department of Public Works. And if you missed Rivers Fest, you missed a great opportunity to learn about the infrastructure of Waynesboro, about our sewer, about our water, about what Public Works does. These folks came out on a Saturday and were operating equipment, explaining their jobs and what they do, and you could tell in what they were explaining to the people that came up to their individual booths, or if you took a ride in the bucket truck, they love their jobs and they're dedicated employees, and I just saw a lot of pride from that department that day, and I want to thank our folks from Public Works also for a job well done.
Thank you. It has absolutely been a busy past couple of weeks, and I thought I'd share a couple of things that I've been working on. Every day should be Teacher Appreciation Day. Last week was the official Teacher Appreciation Week, and I had the privilege of volunteering at my kid's alma mater over at Berkeley Glen and helping out with the lunchroom, so I enjoyed that and all the work that they do to contribute to the improvement of our city. Wanted to also mention, had a wonderful event on Saturday with our Parks and Rec Department and the staff that just did a tremendous job, and even with the rain and pending rain and fear of storms of moving that event indoors and having, I think, at least from just being there for a few hours, a record-breaking attendance with it, it was amazing. I didn't get on the mechanical bull, but there was a mechanical bull and jumpy things for the kids and a great thing for not only the neighborhood but for our community. On more of the business side, Vice Mayor and I have had the privilege for the past several months of having, conducting business visitation programs with some of our larger manufacturers. In some instances, and those I think we've visited so far have done gross sales of over $200 million, that's actually in here in the city of Waynesboro. And so enjoyed that experience as well. Many of my colleagues and I, we partnered and celebrated with Kroger Corporation and Mid-Atlantic Coca-Cola on a program of backpacks for a multitude of students in coordination with Waynesboro Public Schools to hand out, I believe, 500 backpacks with nutritious food for those families that certainly need those additional services in our community. Participated in a couple of ribbon cuttings, it's been a busy time for our downtown here in the past several months, we've had a number of ribbon cuttings. We had City Cow open up across the river on East Main, and then Pyramid across from the French press opened up, and appreciate their contribution to our growing and exciting community. Also, just two more items, more business-related, I had the privilege of participating in a Workforce Development Roundtable with Senator Kane, with a number of regional partners and elected officials from the region, major employers where we talked about workforce development, and, as I like to call it, the Waynesboro 3.0, our new economy and what we're trying to do here in the city, and how that aligns to, again, further diversifying our economy and the importance of workforce development to improve our labor market and our labor attractiveness. And then lastly, the city manager and I were able to actually meet with the, we planned it for a couple of months and we're actually able to pull that off less Wednesday, met with the Governor's Office specifically about economic development opportunities for the city, and a couple of projects in our downtown, shared the work of the nearly $4 million project that'll happen as a result of the Nerda settlement that we fought hard for, and the Virginia Museum of Natural History, and the many exciting momentum that we have as a community, so those are my updates. So, thank you all very much. Number four is to present a plaque to Kate Collins, middle school student, Kaitlyn Hull, Region 3 winner in the Virginia Municipal League's If I Were a Mayor essay contest, and I'm pleased that I have Ms. Janet Arison from the Virginia Municipal League here this evening. Janet, are you still here? Okay, there you are. And I've asked her to come up maybe to the podium for a little bit and tell you a little bit about VML and the program and Kaitlyn's work and how this acknowledgement has advanced to this stage, so thank you Janet for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, members of council, for having me here tonight. I am Janet Arison, I work with the Virginia Municipal League. We're a nonprofit organization, we've been around since 1905, I've been there almost that long, and we represent cities and towns across the state of Virginia, the Commonwealth of Virginia, in all different ways. We do education for them for things like Freedom of Information Act, we do legislative advocacy for local governments because all of you all can't be in Richmond all the time and you wouldn't want to be, and so we represent you with the state government and the General Assembly, and we have wonderful people like people on your council and your manager who serve on committees for us, and they meet with people from across the state who are also in local government, and they talk about the issues of common to them and try to come up with solutions for things that are going on in their communities. The If I Were Mayor contest has been going on for about four years now, we get hundreds of essays every year in this program. It's seventh graders from across the state, they write about what they would like to see happen in their communities if they were the mayor, and out of those hundreds of essays that we receive, eight are chosen as winners, and Kaitlyn is one of those, and that is a big honor. I mean, that's a lot of competition, and all of these young people talk about the things they would like to see happen in their community, and Kaitlyn's was a really good essay, and I know that you will talk about that, Mr. Mayor, very thoughtful, from the heart about what she would like to see in her community. So each one of these young people gets a plaque, and they get a check from us for $150 to use for tuition assistance, no, but for good purposes for things that they would like to do, and as I said, I'm really happy to be here to be a part of this.
Great, wonderful. But Kaitlyn, if you wouldn't mind coming up and I'll hand you your plaque.
I want to sit.
Here, Rachel, come on up here, we'll do a hundred. Here's some protective gear for mom and dad when they get back down. Awesome, thank you. So Kaitlyn's essay, I'm going to be honest with you, when I first read it, it was very poised to the state of our capital infrastructure in the city, specifically to our schools. It was poignant, it was direct, and spoke to the lack of capital investment, the lack of investment in our teachers, the lack of investment and neglect in some of our buildings, materials that educate them, and so at first I was sort of like, well, that's, she won, she won, which is great. And I think it's a natural sort of human behavior, you want to sort of react in two different ways, at least this is how I sort of thought is, well, Kaitlyn, let me tell you. But then, I had the other perspective, which I think is more salient and more poignant and important, and that is seeing our city through the eyes of a seventh grader, seeing our eyes through the eyes of a 13-year-old girl in our school system, and the fear that she has of what capital investments in the deteriorated condition of our community looks like. And so, thanks to Dr. Castle, we were able to meet with her and her family today with the Vice Mayor, and we actually did a tour of the new CTE Center, the old News-Virginian building, and provided an opportunity so that she can now return to her rising eighth graders at Kate Collins and let them know that folks in Waynesboro are working on it, and working on it together as a community with a plan, with intentionality, with purpose, in a practical approach. So Kaitlyn, thank you for your essay and for your work, and to your family as well.
You can see if you can invite the scouts up and sit on the floor up here.
Yeah, actually, so the scouts, if you'd like to come up front and sit on the floor, you're welcome to do so. We've got plenty of room up front.
There's also two seats left up here.
We've got two more seats up here, those that might benefit from sitting.
And anyone else who feels limber enough to come sit on the floor, you're welcome to do that as well.
So, great. So item five is to proclaim the week of May the 12, National Police Week, and Wednesday, May 15, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Waynesboro. With that, we have the proclamation, do we have the proclamation?
Hold on a moment.
Okay. We're going to have the proclamation here in a moment. So with that, we'll invite, well, the chief is already up here. Chief gave up his.
I think there's a copy in your folder, file there.
Yes. Okay, so I'll go and read the proclamations we have right here this evening. We're also having a great event, what's the name of the church?
Main Street United Methodist.
So Main Street United Methodist at 7:00 PM tomorrow, it's a great service, it's like the second or third year that I've been able to attend, would encourage folks to come out and learn about all the hard work our law enforcement and first responders provide for our community. So the proclamation is, whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as Police Week, and whereas the members of law enforcement for the city of Waynesboro, Virginia work tirelessly to protect and serve citizens across the city, enforce our laws, and keep our neighborhoods, schools, and families safe. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, that the police officers report for duty, aware of the sacrifices that they may be called upon to make and risk their lives each and every day in order to safeguard the public. And whereas, the Police Department of Waynesboro, Virginia has developed into a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now therefore, I Terry R. Short Jr., Mayor, on behalf of the City Council of Waynesboro, call upon all citizens of Waynesboro and upon all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to reflect upon the selfless dedication and bravery of our local, state, and other public sector police as our safety and well-being is provided by their devotion to maintaining peace and security in our communities. I further call upon all citizens to observe the week of May 12 through the 18th, 2019, as Police Week, asking our citizens to join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and Wednesday, May 15, 2019, as Police Officer, Peace Officer Memorial Day dedicated to those who have lost their lives and the performance of their duties. Witness thereof, signed, Zild, of Waynesboro. So, honor chief will. All right, so that brings us to number six, which is a presentation of the city manager's recommended budget for FY '20. To receive that presentation and as an introduction for agenda items, seven, eight, and nine. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council, you received a formal presentation, a detailed presentation of my recommended budget for fiscal year 2020 on April 1. Since that time, we've had several work sessions at which we've discussed elements of that budget, and even in the course of some of our regular business meetings, we've had conversations about elements. This presentation will, as you stated, serve as an introduction to the three items of business on the agenda this evening concerning the budget. You have three public hearings scheduled, one on tax rates, one on utility rates, and then the third and final public hearing is on the budget in total and complements with the appropriation or expenditure side in the general fund. I think, again, this will provide sort of a refresher so that as the public prepares, as you prepare to receive, comment, and begin the decision-making process, I think it's appropriate to have a summary and return to the overall recommendations. I'll identify some of the themes, each year the staff and I try to identify key themes and have an overall impressive message that accompanies the presentation of the budget. Before I identify that, though, I'd like to acknowledge that even within the themes and within the budget, there are conspicuous and large influencers, and without rising to the general status of theme, I would point out that in this budget, anybody who is reviewing it with an open mind or a critical eye could see that obviously the general reassessment of real property is an influencer, you should be able to also detect that contributions to outside agencies or partner agencies, which include our public school system, the Department of Social Services, the Middle River Regional Jail, and the Shenandoah Valley Juvenile Services Center have influences, demands or needs by those agencies and partner organizations are reflected in this budget, sometimes not to the extent that they would prefer. You also see contributions of new revenue and an overall new approach to capital project planning and implementation, more on that subsequently. You'll notice, obviously, two, the proposed 3% merit opportunity for city employees, the full-time classified employees, and also, quite substantially, the full responsibility of debt service related to the $20 million renovation of Waynesboro High School is evident in this budget. Again, I like to use sometimes poetry, or music, or literature generally to focus our minds. This quote is provided by the Deputy City Manager, Jim Shaw. I'll let that sink in for a moment.
You're being allowed to sit up for a moment.
Sure, I'd be glad to. "The truth about a city's aspirations isn't found in its vision, it's in its budget." And I think while staff and the council do important work throughout the year, whether it's related to ordinance development, or community development, or economic development, it's pretty obvious that some of the most influential and important decisions that the council makes and that the conversations that occur with our constituents are focused on the budget, and there really isn't any action, service, project, support furnished in the community of any real substance or import that doesn't find its way into our operating budget. We began, I think substantially, our budget process for fiscal year 2020 with a council budget retreat in the fall, and the objective of that is to achieve, to the greatest extent possible, alignment between the city manager's recommended budget and those objectives, preferences, priorities of the elected body, the city council, and we came out of that process with six identified priorities that the staff were instructed to attend to in the development of the budget. So recalling that our retreat occurred in November, the staff then took this information, communicated with department directors, worked through December, January, February, to prepare a recommended budget that if we do our job correctly, reflect these identified priorities and objectives of the council. Number one being addressing employee compensation, number two, pursuing development of Sunset Park, number three, development of basic city neighborhood revitalization programs, and I would expand that to say neighborhood revitalization or planning programs generally, it happens to be that this year our focus is on basic city. Capital funds to pursue comp plan implementation, downtown enhancement programs, and school funding to include operations and facilities. Our theme for this year that the staff identified, and I think it becomes rather obvious, are compensation and capital, and I think if I could communicate to the council or to the listening public, what the staff or what I recommend in this budget is to really make substantial improvement to the manner in which we compensate our employees and the manner in which we plan for and strategically pursue implementation of capital investment in our community. I would note also that, go back a slide, that while these priorities are ranked, as we work through a budget that is dynamic, it is quite possible that we don't pursue all of the objectives or goals with the pace or completeness that we might aspire to. But we nonetheless use these goals and objectives to inform the budget. Before we get to the point of presenting a budget, we scrutinize and evaluate the recommendations of departments, and we consider where we've been as a community and organization previously. I think as we move in this fiscal year 2020 recommended budget, we are clearly moving out of a period where affordability was a clearly stated goal of the elected body, and one that I think today remains an important consideration for our community and the elected body, but it probably was more influential, at least in my service, during the previous eight years than prior to that. In addition to the stated goal of affordability, that elected body had to respond to some very, I would say substantial and unique challenges of their own, namely a recession that occurred in 2008 and really impacted the municipal budget for subsequent years, if not more. Big capital investment requirements in both the sewer enterprise and the water enterprise, both of those enterprise funds were obligated or mandated, more accurately, to create or construct treatment facilities that heretofore had not been required in the treatment of either our wastewater or the pretreatment of our potable drinking water. And finally, that council and this municipal organization had to respond. And finally, that council and this municipal organization had to respond to new mandates such as MS4 and the associated demands of treating and dealing with stormwater in our community. And while I would say that work was challenging at the time, and in some respects heightens the challenges that we face presently, that work also positioned us well to transition into new approaches to capital planning and implementation, and probably positions us well to consider improved models to employee compensation. This budget, you can see, or this illustration illustrates clearly that the recommended budget for fiscal year 2020, at least in the general fund, is $51.6 million. That is a real dollar increase of $278,392 from the current fiscal year to the ensuing fiscal year, which is a .54 increase fiscal year to fiscal year. The graph also illustrates, the blue line are actual budget numbers, the orange or red line illustrates the relationship to that budget number adjusted for inflation. And what we would suggest, or what I would suggest to you, that whatever concerns there are about the overall growth in the general fund, it's lagging, at least over time, behind the influences of inflation. Which means that while we have increases in demands for the expense of utilities, expenses associated with new regulatory programs, additional support for the school system, in large part, we meet those demands not only by increasing revenue, which is borne by the public, but also by making expenditure adjustments within our own operating budget. And you'll see that illustrated in subsequent slides. This is a simple illustration of where the general fund derives its revenue. You can see that for the recommended fiscal year, general property taxes account for 45% of revenue. Other local taxes, which include sales and use taxes, are 31%. The state provides about 18% of our revenue, and then the remaining revenue come from other local revenue sources or the federal government. We'll talk a little bit, or I'll talk a little bit more about the ratio of these revenue sources in subsequent slides. This is a revenue summary for the general fund again, and you can see here that clearly the real estate general reassessment is a substantial influence on our budget, the 7.74% increase. I would note that, and many of you are likely aware, that that is an aggregated increase, that the general reassessment affects individual taxpayers differently depending on the nature of your, where you are in the housing market. So a different price points in the overall city's housing market will influence how an individual family or taxpayer is influenced by the general reassessment. See, I'll note also that the personal property tax is clearly an influencer as well. Beyond that, you can see that one of the things, or a responsibility that staff have is you can note that in other revenue areas, we see either flat or no growth, or modest growth, or even revenues that are going in the wrong direction, we would say, from a manager's point of view, or in a negative direction. So again, part of building a budget is contending with the moving influences in a budget, and that while things like general property assessment increases and rate recommendations obviously capture the interest of the public, they aren't the only factor in developing the revenue side of the budget. I'll note also that another key consideration in this budget, and I'll elaborate again subsequently, is we reduce our reliance on fund balance. In the past, we had fallen into this effective but non-preferable habit of relying heavily on the end-of-year surplus to fund capital investment or capital replacement. So you predict your revenues conservatively, you manage your expenditures more conservatively, and generally, you end the fiscal year with a positive variance in your budget. You then use that to replace vehicles, replace carpet, accumulate some money for big projects, but it's very difficult to do that. And it's not recommended because you end up deferring maintenance and basing your savings and affordability to a great extent, to an unpreferable extent, on artificially suppressed wages and salaries for your workforce. This budget endeavors to, excuse me, begin to turn a new habit and reduce our overall reliance on fund balance to support those items that the staff believes ought to be supported by operating budgets. Then, that allows you to save, if you have a positive variance at the end of the year, your positive variance can then, with council's affirmation, become available for large capital investments such as parks, or schools, or roads, or bridges. Another illustration included for purposes of making the following point. On the broader scheme, on the longer term, the staff would recommend to council that it consider that at 41% of real property as a source of revenue in your general fund, it's more common to see that number among municipalities and even counties in the range of 45% to 50%. That your real property is an appreciating value in your community and tends to be stable and more predictable in terms of its delivery of revenue to the organization. We realize at the same time that that is the most politically sensitive revenue source for a community and for a council making decisions about revenues. The hazard being, however, the more you rely on sources of revenues such as sales taxes, meals taxes, lodging taxes, which are more subject to influence of the vicissitudes of a changing economy, and that really threatens the sustainability of your municipal organization and its ability to support your public school system and deliver core services. So we are, we think this budget begins to make improvement. I would tell you honestly, there's more improvement probably that can be made, but we're headed in the right direction. And I don't want to make too much of this, but as we scan the longer range, there is concern about how retail sales or retail marketing and purchasing, the retail habits of consumers in North America is changing, and how that might threaten local economies relying on sales tax, and even the presence of retail merchants who pay real property taxes as well. I said that we began this process in earnest with a retreat in the fall. I think you could also argue or assert that really, the work on this budget began in the preceding year with the concluding work on the revisions to the comp plan, in which really, an aspirational document that forces not only the council and the municipal organization, but I think the community, to confront some difficult truths about where we are financially, where we are socially, economically, and how we get to our preferred future or meet our aspirations for a healthier, more sustainable, and vibrant community. But two observations made in the comp plan that were worthy of highlighting and inform a budget, that the community, the comp plan urges, I would say, the community, the municipal organization, the council, to address revenue vulnerabilities posed by reliance on the town center and similar suburban-style commercial development, because without doing so, we're vulnerable to a fast-changing retail landscape. Property taxes are not indexed in a rational way to link them to the actual cost of running a city, and yet should be. And so that's really, I would say, a more articulate and concise way of making the point that I did in the previous slides, that we really, as a municipal organization and community, as painful as it may be sometimes, need to take a critical look at where we're deriving our revenue and how we're building our municipal budget and our local economy in that regard. This is a summary expenditure by category, and again, similar to the revenue story, you can see here in salaries and wages and benefits, that recommendations associated with employee compensation are a large influencer in this budget. We have a recommendation that pay scales should be adjusted on the entry and max points by 10%. That does not mean that all employees will receive a 10% increase, far from it. That 10% pay grade adjustment only affects those individuals who would fall then below the entry point and creates future capacity for employees who are situated at the max point in a given grade. Our pay system, as you may be familiar, has pay grades assigned to various jobs, and each job has an entry point and a max point, and that's the foundation by which we compensate our employees, either by salary or wage. And as you've heard over the last six months, and especially in the development of this budget, our compensation situation is competitive, and our organization suffers challenges with respect to retaining, attracting and retaining well-qualified professional public servants. Again, a similar point made earlier, while we have categories of expenditures that are obviously increasing, we also have categories of expenditures that are decreasing. Largely, that's a function of fluctuations in work demand, but also a function of the reality that the staff confronts, is that we understand that it will not be practical or possible to accommodate all of the increased forces on a budget by simply assigning them to new revenue increase recommendations. So we have to go into the operating budgets and make reductions. By the time we get to April 1st and we deliver a recommended budget to the city council, the staff or the city manager will have cut nearly $5.5 million out of departmental recommendations. You'll note also, I'm sure you followed in the news narrative, that the schools are going through a particularly challenging budget year, and are confronted with significant demands to reduce expenses, in that increases in revenues are not able to accommodate all of their expenditure demands. So to some extent, while it's never easy or comfortable to consider recommendations to increase tax rates or fee rates, I think it's important for the council to know and for the listening public to know that your staff doesn't rely on revenues exclusively to solve a budget dilemma. We rely, we look to our department heads to eliminate expenditures, and to tighten belts, and to borrow whatever worn-out budget cliche that you want to insert there, but it's sufficient to say, we do a significant amount of cutting and reducing before it gets to a recommendation status. This is an illustration of how, in the general fund, we allocate expenditures. You can see there that the local school support is the largest single appropriation or beneficiary of appropriation expenditure line in our budget, followed by public works, police, and debt-related expenses. I would say that generally speaking, if you were going to make a gross, general, perhaps even overstatement, our budget, your municipal budget, is really a core services budget. And the extra things that we're able to accomplish in terms of new parks and recreation programming, new trails, new facilities, really are, I wouldn't say exclusively, but to a great extent, accomplished by reliance on grant funds and through the benefit of creative and determined staff who find ways to keep us moving forward at a very affordable price point in terms of our taxes. I mentioned some of the cutting that occurs before we get to a recommendation. I would tell you that in my experience, our department directors are well-informed and savvy, and they're really reputable professionals. I don't see in our budgets recommendations or requests that I would look at and ascribe a categorization of ill-informed or misplaced. I think they are all in tune with recommendations that move either the department or the community forward, or begin to address service needs that we detect, either from the council or from the public. But you can see there a list, and a lot of, it's heavy in positions, that the fire department has an adopted staffing plan. The new positions for the fire department really are aimed at delivering a sufficient number of fire personnel to a scene to keep them safe, to keep our professional firefighters safe, and also to deliver professional and swift service to victims of fires. There were four positions in the police department that were eliminated, requested, recommended by the department, but I did not see adequate revenue or see fit to recommend the positions. The administrative assistant split between EOC and information technology is actually a remnant position that was eliminated during the recession and has never been restored, and we've looked at that as perhaps a more efficient or effective way to restore the position would be to have it be a shared position. But even in that model, it did not make the cut. The Director of Economic Development had a request and recommendation. For two years running now, we've received a request for additional personnel in the registrar's office. We're trying to do a better job with respect to replacing police vehicles in a timely manner, and that's increasingly important as we embark on a take-home vehicle program. And then funds were cut out of recommendations associated with downtown redevelopment. On the revenue side, the budget recommends that the real estate rate remain at $0.90 per $100 evaluation. That takes full advantage, I would say, or delivers full benefit of the revenue generated through the general reassessment. My recommendation is that the personal property tax rate be set at $3.25 per $100 evaluation. That the stormwater utility fee increase from $3.42 per ERU by 15% to $3.96 per ERU. And then we've been working with a rate study that was completed in 2016, 2017, that examined the enterprise fund's abilities to meet operational capital and debt obligations currently and moving forward. And we appreciate council's support in following the recommended rate increase program that lends some measure of predictability and affordability by being able to smooth increases, and that plan calls for a 1.1% increase in both the water and sewer enterprises. Rate comparisons across the Commonwealth. At $0.90 per $100 assessed value, that will be put Waynesboro 30th among 38 independent cities in Virginia. The median real estate rate among Virginia cities is $1.07, and the unwed average real estate rate among Virginia cities is $1.05. Now, I imagine tonight and in the ensuing week, there'll be conversations about whether this is the right recommendation and whether our community is slipping away from an affordable community. I would assert to you that by objective measures that managers rely on, we have some room to increase the rate and remain an affordable community in which to live. Now beyond that, whether that's a truth statement for individual taxpayers, or for families, or whether it's the right number for the council, is up to you to decide, but I feel I have a professional obligation to tell you by metrics available to us, we have some room where we could work and improve in that regard, if it's the council's desire to do so. Similarly, where personal property tax is concerned, the average personal property tax rate among Virginia cities is 3.78. Our current rank among the 38 independent cities is 34th, and the median rate is 3.75. So again, some room to work, or the opportunity to increase without, in my view, threatening or undermining the affordable nature of life in Waynesboro. Aside from, or in addition to, the improvements contemplated for employee compensation, the staff's work around capital improvement planning and implementation the staff's work around capital improvement planning and implementation really is what I would hold up as a hallmark and a chief accomplishment in this budget. This is without question, in my service to the organization, the best rendering of capital planning and funding that I've -- that our staff has accomplished. And I'm really excited about the change and opportunity that this presents to transform our community, but also to allow elected officials and the interested public to look at a document and understand with some certainty and clarity what's going on and when they might expect a project to be funded or completed. This is year one of the CIP, and in the first column, you can see the department that is the sponsor or origin of the project. You've fire jail, juvenile detention center, Greenway projects, streets, mechanical projects, et cetera. This next column identifies the funding source, and you'll see in a lot -- in many cases, you have combinations. So local funding, grant and local funding, solely grant funding. And so I think that's helpful for the community and elected officials to understand how projects are funded and to what extent the local -- the locality is responsible for the entirety of a project. We've talked about in the past, some of the delay in accomplishing capital investment in our community is attributable to the fact that we rely so heavily on either funding from the state government or the federal government, which then comes with requirements, regulatory requirements or mandates before -- that must be satisfied in order to accomplish a project. The center column is the nature of the project, so the purchase of an aerial truck. We have debt related to our membership at the Middle River Regional Jail. We continue to pursue Greenway opportunities in our community. Sunset Park was identified as a key objective, goal, aspiration for the council in this budget. And then you also see sort of capital maintenance projects that, again, aren't attractive, probably aren't the most fun and rewarding or satisfying work that we accomplish, but are essential to preserving the assets that we have as resources and delivering service on a sustainable and consistent basis. You see the cost of the project illustrated here. And then, again, tying our budget to the comprehensive plan, we've assigned some of the nomenclature that come from the comprehensive plan to projects, and also in cases in which the comp plan referenced a specific project, we've identified that reference specifically. This is a follow-up to how capital projects are funding. It's a summary of where are the funds for our capital program are derived. And you can see, we specifically identify either the state agency or the federal agency that is furnishing money. Again, a big theme in this budget is the fact that we are appropriating, operating our current year revenues to capital investment, and we're also reformatting or reforming reliance on fund balance or reserves to accomplish the capital program. Similar comparison related to stormwater utility fees. Not all cities have stormwater fees or stormwater programs. For those that do, the average or the median, excuse me, is $6 per ERU, and the average is $7.12. We're recommending the council go to $3.96 in this budget. Here's a charted history and of our enterprise rates, our sewer and water rates. And again, you can see here, I'm sorry, we'll get to the next slide. This is a slide illustrating the impact on a consumer or a customer that uses 10,000 gallons in a bi-monthly billing period, which is typical for many three or four-member households. Hastening us along, I would point out that overall, the impact of the 1.1 percent is estimated to be $11.64 for the entire year, or $1.94 per billing period that we bill every other month. That concludes my -- the presentation, and we can move into -- I'm happy to respond to questions that you may have. Otherwise, we can move into the public hearing schedule for the evening.
Any questions for Mr. Hamp?
I'd have a math question.
Yes, sir.
If you have a person who has a $30,000 vehicle, and right now they're paying $250 per year for personal property, and it goes up to $3.25, how much of an increase is that?
Mr. Shaw, are you doing math down there?
I'm going to do some math. $30,000 vehicle.
Mr. McCormick.
Yeah.
I don't know. Probably because we're going. I think you know why we're sprinting.
Discounting the PRT relief that we received from the state, that would be about $225 a year on a $30,000 vehicle. We receive tax rate from the Commonwealth for motor vehicles, but there is a cap on the vehicle to which it can be applied, and so are the value. So a lesser expensive vehicle, if it was, say, a $20,000 vehicle, they may get as much as half of the tax relieved through the state. Once you go over $20,000, $20,000, that tax relief doesn't exist over that $20,000 threshold. But a $30,000 vehicle, without any tax relief, would be about $225 a year.
That's what the increase would be?
Yes, without any relief. And as I say, below $20,000, the relief is typically half of whatever the tax is.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll save that for the public hearing process. Thank you. So that brings us to item seven, is to hold a public hearing to receive public comments and consider introducing an ordinance imposing taxes for the calendar year 2019 on property and persons for the repayment of interest on the city debt, for the support of city government, for the maintenance of public schools, and for other expenses providing for the assessment of persons and property for the collection of taxes, revenues, assessments, and imposing penalties for the failure to comply with the provisions hereof. Mr. Hamp?
So the first speaker is Mr. Brett Hayes, followed by Mr. Jeff Elkins.
I think we should have some Avenger music coming as he's coming on. Brett, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record. And so I'll -- I might say it a few times, but just for folks and the number of speakers that we might have this evening. So we've got our countdown timer that it works like a traffic light. Green is go, yellow, slow down, or sort of wrap things up, and then red is there's another person that wants to speak after you, so please wrap it up. So with that, Mr. Hayes.
Okay. Brett Hayes, I live at 1889 Sanger's Lane in Stanton, but I own Zeus Theaters, Mo's Southwest Grill, a number of other properties in the city. I currently employ and have employed a very large number of high school and students from Waynesboro High School. I can tell you there's some great kids out there. Some are great because their parents are great. Some are great in spite of their parents. All of them are better because of great teachers. I stand for the teachers who stand for our kids. The success or failure in this community is heavily reliant upon the education of the people in it. If you have good schools, you attract more growth, investment in business in your community. Good schools are nothing more than good teachers and good facilities. I stand with teachers who stand for our kids. If you want to have a robust and strong economy, you will start with filling the schools with competitively paid teachers. There's little to keep your best and brightest teachers from driving 30 minutes east, west, north, or south, and making $1,000, $2,000, $5,000 more a year for the same work. I stand for the teachers who stand for our kids. I know there are some who would gripe about paying more in taxes. Move. Go to another place where there are no schools. This place has schools. We have children. We have an obligation to take care of the children. We can drive on dirt roads before we have our children not be educated properly. I stand for the teachers who stand for our kids. Currently, we give about $15 million out of your general budget, general funding. Am I correct? And that is on this obscure 42.5 percent split of the real estate tax. But as I understand it, that 42.5 percent split is delayed by two years. I am asking the city council to get rid of that delay. I'm not asking you to change your tax rate, your tax rate that you've got. Understand, we have to do it. It's tough. We've got to pay taxes, got to pay for the teachers who stand for our kids. But let's get rid of the two-year delay, because a two-year delay is hurting the school system this year. We've got about 20, 25 positions being cut out of this year's budget while we have another $1.5 million coming into the coffers from the assessment. So I ask for the city council, who has this ability to do it, to change that rule and have that money go out this year, not in two years. You're going to spend it, spend it now. You can't bring the teachers back. So I say, stand for our teachers because they stand for our kids. I hope you do the same. It's a simple request. I think that it doesn't cost any more than we're doing. I hope Mike is nodding in agreement. I know I've got some agreement with the teachers in here. Thank you very much for my -- for your time. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Harry Coleman, after Mr. Elkins.
Mr. Elkins, if you could do the same, state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
I'm Jeff Elkins. My address is 659 Caff Mountain Road, but my property is 702nd Street in Waynesboro. I'm here not because of the budget, because I understand we have to have funds to run a city, any city. My question's in methodology. First, I would prefer that the council look very seriously at property value instead of percent increase to 90 cents. Reasoning is simple. We all sell properties. When you sell a property, there is a value to the assessed value of the property. Simply by putting 90 cents in per hundred, we deter growth. We deter investment. But by giving true value to the property, we in fact create funds for the city, and we have ability to recoup that value when we sell the properties. Second thing is, dear to me as well, January 4th, my building caught on fire. We had six assets, major assets, from the fire department. We had three assets from the police department. We had two assets from the rescue squad. We had all kinds of city people. We had floors, we had everybody. And we had the people there for about 17 hours. I bring this up to everybody's attention because I am a large loss insurance consultant. In my policy for that building, I have up to $50,000 reimbursement to the city for these resource funds. My bill from the city was zero. When that building caught on fire, you were no longer working for me. You were working for my insurance company. There is no reason when you -- the city effectively saved my insurance company $3.5 million. And this -- and my policy allows for the city to charge up to $50,000, my particular policy, up to $50,000 of that, and yet my charge was zero. That is a revenue source readily available that doesn't cost anybody in this room anything because it's already in my insurance policy. I think we should consider the city strongly considering the use in reutilization of its assets of that nature, because I use those assets. Now, the fact that I have a fire tax, that's for them to show up. I use those assets for 17 hours. The last thing I would request is that before you entertain the stormwater fee increase, to produce a P and L so that we can see where did the stormwater money go that we're already being assessed. You know, I have the third largest building in town. Obviously, these things affect me, just like real estate increases affect me. But if that's what we need to do as a city, that's perfectly fine, and I happen to agree with Brett. We have to educate all of these people. The town has to have certain services, but we need to at least look, my town is a -- so we need to at least look at what we're doing and look at different sources of revenue streams. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Harry Coleman, followed by Alfred Swysgood.
Mr. Coleman, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Harry Coleman, 105 Tiffany Drive, Waynesboro. Dear members of city council, city staff, and fellow citizens, I'm here with my new 2019 city real estate assessment, which means $151 more out of my pocket. But frankly, I would have to be a real hypocrite to pretend this is some unfair scheme by the city to hog and waste more of my money. I've lived in this city now for 47 years, and at one time I had three children in the school system. I was employed for 37 years at DuPont, which became Invista. Considering my starting salary in 1972, I am darn grateful that I got a number of raises over that 37-year period, and not once did I decide not to accept a raise or ask to have my salary reduced, because my family's expenses and the prices of things we needed certainly continued to climb. Our higher real estate tax assessment shows that home prices are rising again, but all the costs of properly running our city are increasing as well. The increase in revenue Waynesboro will receive by holding on to the current 90-cent rate isn't even really a raise. It's a cost-of-living adjustment for the city. I'm on a fixed income with no kids in school, but it's my responsibility as a citizen to pay my fair share. So yes, I ask city council to approve continuing the present real estate rate. The last time I spoke at a session like this, when I did a number of hours of research on the internet to understand more about our city's tax rate, I looked up city tax rates from 1999 to 2014 for all 37 or 38 incorporated cities in our state. I'll simplify this time and ask council to consider this. Number one, of all 50 states, Virginia ranks 18th for the lowest average real estate taxes. 32 more states have higher taxes. Of all 37 cities in Virginia, Waynesboro ranks 31st, same number you gave us. So only six or seven are actually lower. Starting with a 90, incidentally, the highest we ever got in ranking was 25 over that whole period. We were always lower. Starting with a 97-cent rate in 1999, Waynesboro dipped as low as 70 cents from 2007 to 2010 and is now back up to 90 cents. But we cut our tax rate 15.98 percent in that period, a larger percentage cut over that period than any other city in the state except one. We must have really been loaded, huh? What I saw over this time was city council members playing politics with their tax rates, and I think that mentality has drastically harmed our city. Were they acting responsibly? Our police department is understaffed and underpaid. City infrastructure is hurting with a major bridge out, waterline problems, and crumbling sidewalks, and our school system is paying a horrible price. Our school system has had to cut professional positions and teaching assistants, and we're once again borrowing money to rebuild a 1938 vintage high school. Indeed, large property owners got a real break, but our students, our teachers, and policemen, our public workers, and our lowest-income residents who need city service the most got a raw deal. We as a city did not do what is necessary to keep our city moving forward by letting our tax rates get lowered. We have a new comprehensive plan for our city. We involve citizens and paid consultants to help. There are many things in that plan that we desperately need, but the city does not have funds to even start most of them. Nothing in the plan said that the future of our city hinges on cutting our already very low very low property tax rates.
Mr. Coleman, if you wouldn't conclude your, your statements if you could.
And if the next big potential company comes along looking for a key place to build, they will be more concerned about our school system and the educational level of our workforce and about our already low tax rates.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Alfred Swysgood, followed by Bill Kreistek.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Alfred Swysgood, 228 Stoner Wall Drive in Waynesboro, Virginia. I guess I'm here as the oddball. I guess I'm the only one that has a problem, uh, thinking about the increase. But I want to first thank council, all of you all and all that's worked hard to try to get the budget together and the work that you do throughout the year. And I definitely stand for education and also, and also the law enforcement and, and particularly these groups. I know we need to increase salaries and I know we need to, uh, spend money for the educational buildings and expenses, but, uh, I also am concerned about the fact that, uh, I'm living in a neighborhood that is depreciated considerably in appearance and upkeep. And, uh, this year I got a, over 15% reassessment fee on, on my, on my real estate. And, uh, it's, uh, I, I guess maybe I'm the only one that, uh, uh, no, feels like that it's a little bit over burdensome. And I do, uh, I, at my age and with my fixed income, I'm just, uh, I guess most people can affect, I mean, can, uh, you know, easily pay the extra monies, but it's getting so that I have to give consideration or trying to get myself moved probably to another location, even if I have to go to dirt roads. But anyway, uh, thank you very much. I appreciate you taking attention and listening to us. And I also want to say that I, I wholeheartedly support the comments that were made and, uh, of the previous speakers. And, uh, I, I respect that, have the highest respect for that also. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and, uh, address for the record, please.
Will do. Thank you. Hello. Good evening. My name is Bill Kreistek, 1321 Hollands Road. I come here before council, I came before councils your last meeting to express my concerns and ask questions. Specifically, I asked why the city's additional revenue streams, which totaled $1.25 million from the town center and a stormwater fee, did not help in our test that our taxes went up. I don't know. I also asked if our tax dollars were being used to fund incentives for experienced teachers to retire. Uh, and I'd mentioned this, well, as I still not had a response from anyone on council, and this is concerning, as I've always had a response from past councils on my concerns. As I was asked to present council my written comments from the last meeting, I thought it'd be prudent of me to also provide and produce the documentation to support my comments on the $8 starting difference in salary between Augusta County and Waynesboro schools. I've highlighted the appropriate line items so you can see them for yourselves. Based upon this $8 difference, the huge increase in proposed taxes on just my property alone will be able to make up this difference for 41 and a half new teachers. This just doesn't seem right to me. I'm also providing documentation as to my comment about the funding experienced teachers for their early retirement. I include a copy of Waynesboro School Board minutes of March 19th, 2019. Under item four, section F, you will find listed Retirement Incentive Program, which was approved at the meeting. I have additional questions and comments, but I'll reserve that for general citizen purpose. However, I did raise my hand earlier and the reason I was raising my hand was because I heard that we were rated 34th out of 38 in the independent cities of Virginia. So my question, being a former math teacher, uh, and to be fair, I'd like to know what, and you need all three, the mean, median, and mode of the family incomes are for those cities as well to see where we fit in. After all, it's not easy. You can ask what's the average income of somebody who buys a Mercury or Lincoln, I should say, or somebody who buys, you know, something. You really need that information to be comparison. I'd also like to know regarding our children, our students, where does Waynesboro rate in terms of the, it's a, the free and reduced lunch rate that has gone up dramatically since when I was teaching? And so I'd like to know where we would fit in that as well. So if we're gonna compare the tax rate, where do we compare in the other areas as well? If we are similar, no problem. If we're not, that needs to be taken into account. As I mentioned earlier, I'll speak about some other items later. Uh, this is the council copy. Can I, how do I, kind of, thank you? And it's got the highlighted areas referencing my last speech. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Taisha Scott and James Wiley.
Ms. Scott, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Taisha Scott, um, 348 Port Republic Road, Waynesboro. So the mom that stands for a kid, um, which is me, I should be living and working and getting medical, medical care and commuting in my, in the same community that I live in and, and pay taxes in. But I can't because what's in place now is of no real use to me. Because for one, I'm a newly single parent of one. I have no car. I have self-care obligations in order for me to, to be the mother that I need to be to my daughter and the obligations that I have to her such as receiving or, and the obligations that I have to her. I would love for, um, to see a, um, uh, excuse me, I would love to see, um, mental health care, uh, mental health treatment facilities in Waynesboro, substance abuse, abuse treatment, um, facilities in Waynesboro. None of that is actually in Waynesboro and I have to go outside of Waynesboro and the public transportation, um, that's in place in the city while can be useful is not useful enough. For instance, if I just want to go from one side of town to the other, it could take anywhere from an hour or more. And the frequency of buses at each stop make it impossible for me to get multiple places in a day. The city needs to expand the transit system, which I would think would add to the revenue and help employment for our community. Instead of right now, I'm faced with potentially having to move as far as Harrisonburg and or Charlottesville because I have a better chance of survival because of, of the readily available programs I need and services available at the same pace as the citizens of their community need them to be. I feel I'm being pushed out of Waynesboro because of my lower-class status and I feel like I can't even grow here to rise above the lower-class status. I would be risking leaving my child with her other half who's in a better financial place than me, along with the fact that I wouldn't want to pull her from, um, school where she is flourishing as a student at William Perry. But as a newly single mom who has to find a place to live now, I'm also running into the issue of affordable housing due to rent rising because of the tax budgets rising. My situation makes up for hundreds of people in my situation, in my situation or worse in this community that can't even afford to pay you taxes so that we are counted for contributing to our community, which I know that I'm obligated to and want to do. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Wiley, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name's James Wiley. I live at 925 Washington Avenue, Waynesboro. Um, I didn't prepare like a big speech, so please bear with me. I hope I don't ramble too much. My son goes to Berkeley Glen Elementary. Uh, he loves it there. His teachers are amazing and they're all underpaid, as all teachers are. In the wintertime, I really enjoy when the roads are plowed. Uh, this last winter, when the trees were off the road within a couple of days of the big ice storm, that was pretty cool. I haven't had to deal with the fire department here, luckily. Um, I've had very limited, uh, interactions with the police department here. Thank God. Just saying. But these are all things that we have to pay for somehow. And until we get something like a public banking option in Virginia, the way to do that is going to be through higher taxes. I know a lot of people think that people my generation, my age, don't understand how the economy works. You know, we all want something for free, but that's just not the way it is. I mean, we understand that we need to be taxed and I for one am okay with a higher tax rate, if it means making Waynesboro a better place. One of my favorite quotes of all time is, "We rise together or none of us rise at all." And I think we all need fair, payer, face, pay our fair share to be able to make Waynesboro a better place. We have to invest in the town that we live in for it to be a better place. That's all again.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley.
Ms. C.R. Barrett, Ms. Sarah Ann Stevenson.
Good evening. If you could mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Thank you, city council. I appreciate being able to speak with you and Councilman Haasiter, thank you again for the time you spent with us last week. My concern is simply that, um, we need to leave, you know, live within our means. Waynesboro has a 17.4% poverty level and we cannot have starting salaries that rival neighboring communities that have less poverty levels than we do. The comprehensive plan was, is a wonderful, inspiring document, but it doesn't really address the 17.4% poverty level that we have in Waynesboro. And my concern is this, I listen to Taisha and others speak and, you know, we all agree that everyone is underpaid. You're underpaid, teachers are underpaid, everyone works hard. And we, we have to be able to work together to get things done and we want to do that. But again, we have to live within our means. And you have asked the city manager to put together a budget that basically has increased, I don't know, 10 to 15% overall. We have real estate tax rates that went up last year, 7 cents per 100 and your, or 8 cents per 100, and they're gonna go up again. Another, you've recommended that they go up again this year. So overall, in a two-year period, you're looking at almost 14%, 15% increase. Again, we want to be reasonable. We want to do the things that you want to do. You have great vision. However, we need priorities, we need a plan, and we need to focus on the things that bring Waynesboro along. We want to be able to help individuals attain a better standard of living. If you increase taxes all the way around, real estate, personal property, sewer, water, stormwater, et cetera, that's less money in the individual's hands. If it's less money in the individual's hands, they have less discretionary income, they have less money to spend on transportation or food or clothing or whatever it happens to be. You have some unintended consequences in that there could be lower sales and meals taxes as a result. You haven't even talked about the external economy. We are in a real shaky time right now. We've got tariff wars going on and things that are going to impact people in Waynesboro. And if we are overly confident about what we can bear in terms of all of these combined taxes at a, as a citizenry, you could create some real unintended consequences for people if things get bad again. You know, when the housing market went bust in 2008, my personal property tax, my real estate tax did not go down. I paid the same amount of tax. Your revenue might've gone down, but every household suffered with loss of wages, loss of jobs, whatever, but we still had to pay the same amount of tax. So all I'm asking, I'm asking several things of you. I'm asking you to direct the city manager with as much work as you guys have put through this budget to keep the equalized real estate tax rate at 85% or 85 cents per 100 assessed. That's number one. Number two, I'm asking you to keep the personal property tax lower than what you've, uh, wanted to increase it. The personal property tax increase is going to fund mainly additional capital improvement projects. And the capital improvement, okay, I'll wrap it up. Specifically, when we look at the, um, the capital improvements on page 167, we talked about, there are a couple of things that you can strike from that budget so that we can get a, a grip around things like pay increases for city workers without having to gouge the public with this much of a tax increase. Again, we want a well-educated citizenry, but you can't just keep doing the same things over and over again, throwing money at things. We really need to look at structural changes. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
So after Ms. Stevenson, Mr. Ken Adams, followed by Ms. Shonda McGuffin. So Ms. Stevens, going once. Sarah Ann Stevenson, I'm sorry, Stevenson, going twice.
Mr. Adams, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Be glad to do so. My name is Ken Adams. I live at 712 Pelham Drive in Waynesboro. The issue as it relates to tax rates really is a tension between the needs of the city, the wants of the city, and the abilities of the public to pay taxes. And so it's a natural tension that comes up from time to time and it's a struggle. It's a struggle for, um, the council, it's a study, a struggle for the management of the city. And I would say parenthetically, Mr. Hamp, your presentation was excellent. I've seen many presentations in my life and it was excellent and I thank you. I would submit to the members of the council that the combination of last year's tax rate increase and the increase from the equalization rate of this year combines to be a two-year property tax increase of 15%. 15% is, is, um, a big jump. And I would submit that that two-year increase is both unreasonable, not reasonable, and not responsible. I would say a big jump of 15% is not reasonable because it, it far surpasses the annual rate of inflation. As most of you know, the annual rate of inflation is 1.9%. So a two-year increase in the annual inflation is 3.8%. You put the 3.8% on one side of a scale and a 15% taxing, property tax increase, and it's a tremendous imbalance. The difference is 11.2% spread. And so I think that's unreasonable, which leads me to the second point, which is, I think it's not responsible because Waynesboro has a wide spectrum of citizens and a 15% tax increase is a, I would call it a cruel burden on those who are least able to afford a 15% two-year tax increase. And so I would ask the council to reconsider raising the tax rate 5 cents from the equalization rate from 85 cents to 90 cents, considering the effect it has on the, on the population of, of Waynesboro. Recognizing that there's a tension, I think it's important to think, when we look at taxes, not only the financial effect that taxes have in meeting the needs of the city, but also the personal effect that taxes have on our citizens. Thank you.
Great. So following Ms. McGuffin, we'll have Ms. Kristy Williams, Dr. Lowell Lemmons, and then, um, Darcy Martin, Ms. Darcy Martin.
Ms. McGuffin, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please. Ms. McGuffin, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Shonda McGuffin, 644 Edwardian Lane here in Waynesboro. And I wanted to ask, Sarah thinks that you said her name incorrectly.
I may have.
Kristofferson. She was supposed to speak before Ken.
Oh, I'm sorry. I read it as Sarah Ann Stevenson. It's Sarah Kristofferson.
Yes.
Can we, we'll get her after Ms. Martin.
After Shonda, if that's okay.
Or I could get you after Ms. Martin.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
We'll get you.
Mine is short and sweet. I talked last meeting about my support in the higher tax rate. And I just would like us to keep in mind the amount of teachers that we are losing with a cut in the school system that's already struggling with student-teacher ratio. My son is in the school system, A.K. Collins. I've been involved in PTOs between Westwood and K. Collins. And the teacher ratio, teacher-student ratio is already a strain. It was disheartening to hear that the six firemen were cut from the fire department with the fire department on the east end and having to get to the west end of town if there is a fire. Lord forbid if there is two fires in the city. And also the police department, which all of us use at some point in time. And so I just want to point out this, that even with supporting the higher tax increase, the tax rate, I want to question your priorities in the city as well. If you vote to increase the taxes for the budget, please be good stewards of the money, divided among all areas, not just the west end of town. Prioritize appropriately to ensure marginalized citizens aren't overlooked when you are looking at the city as a whole. And I'll talk about the marginalized citizens a little later in the public comment section. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So I will just, as a point of clarification, and Mr. Hamp, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the six positions at the fire department, those were requested new positions of the fire, of the fire chief.
That's correct.
Okay. So just to reassure folks, there weren't cutting six fire positions.
So we're at Ms. Kristi Williams, followed by Dr. Lemmons, followed by Ms. Martin.
Well, actually, we'll get Ms. Kristofferson after.
Okay. Yes, sir. Sorry. I apologize. Ms. Kristofferson.
Okay. Sorry if I wrote sloppy.
It's okay. Ms. Kristofferson, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Sarah Kristofferson, 1118 Fairway Drive in Waynesboro. Thank you for having me tonight and letting me speak to you. I'd like to thank Mr. Coleman as well for his comments and the research that he did on the record, and also want to echo what he said. Thank you so much for that. I just want to say that I think that it's cruel for our city workers to be paid below the poverty level. I volunteer at the Disciples Kitchen Soup Kitchen, and I have seen, every time I have volunteered there, city workers coming in for free lunch. And for somebody who works for a city government and somebody who works full-time, have to come in and get free lunch from a soup kitchen, I just feel like it's just not an appropriate way for our city workers to be treated. In regards to the tax, the tax raise, there are tax relief programs in place for those who need it. I know the council recently opened up the tax relief program for the first time in a long time for those citizens that need it, especially elderly citizens. There's more information about that in some of the materials that have been provided online, if you're interested in that. And I just want to say, I just can't believe that we're complaining about a tax raise that can just get our city back up to where we should be anyway. It just breaks my heart that we're all complaining about that. One suggestion I have is to maybe break up the personal property taxes into two payments to make it a little bit easier for folks to pay that. Also brings revenue into the city's hands twice a year instead of once a year. You know, the bottom line is that we're in this position because of the work of previous councils. I know you talked about that a little bit. And, you know, we're trying to pull ourselves out of debt and out of crisis, and we just need, we need a plan for the future. And I don't know how we're going to do that when we're taking money from here for there. You know, what are we going to do next year? Are we going to have to do that again next year and over and over? So we just, you know, this budget doesn't get us to where I think we need to be, but it at least gets us one step closer. And if we don't plan for the future, I don't know what's going to come next. You know, is my nine-year-old going to be going through the same thing in 20 years if she even decides to stay in Waynesboro in 20 years? So that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please?
Certainly. I'm Kristi Williams, and I'm 400 Pelham Drive in Waynesboro, Virginia. And you'll have to excuse my voice. I am feeling a little under the weather, so, but I felt it important to be here today. Mr. Mayor, City Councilman, City Councilwoman, thank you for listening to me today in regards to the budget. And I come to you today as a parent, as a homeowner, as somebody who works in this community, whose husband works in this community, and who moved my brother and my mother across California to live in this city, to be close to me, opposed to us moving to them, because I love Waynesboro. I love the people here, and I love the school systems here. A quick comment in regards to the inflation rate, as it does go up 1.9% every year. Our school systems have two different, you know, they have different facets of their budget, but they have the salary portion, but they also have the, like, the non-salary expenditures. So just to keep in mind, when we're thinking about inflation, our school system has done a great job with their budget of staying within 2.8% since their 2011 fiscal year budget. So as inflation does go up about 2% every single year, our school system, our superintendent and our school board have managed to balance their budget to stay within 2.8% since 2011. Now, I know that my operating expenses since 2011 are nowhere close to what they are now, and there's no way that I could afford to live on a budget that I had back in 2011. I think a lot of folks here tonight have made great comments, but I want to focus on a couple stories and a couple facts real quick. In regards to the Waynesboro Police Department, the folks that, you know, they defend us, they protect us, they make sure that we are safe, they make sure our children are safe, and they make sure our parents are safe. 30% turnover of sworn personnel hired in the past five years in our police department. That means in the past five years, people that have come in, 30% of them have walked back out the door. That's unacceptable to me. Entry salary level for a police officer in Augusta County is $44,000. In Stanton, it's about $48,000. In Harrisonburg, it's about $50,000. And here in Waynesboro, it's $40,000. I have a good friend who's a Waynesboro Police Department officer, and he gets offers all the time from Stanton and Augusta County to be, you know, go and work over there. And he won't do it because he loves Waynesboro, and he says it's not about the money, it's about Waynesboro. I love Waynesboro. I want to retire within the Waynesboro Police Department, but I don't know how long that's going to last. He still has a good 20 years to work. So he's a good one. We need to keep him here. Let's talk about schools for a minute. So raises for teachers over the last five years, I talked a little bit about this at the last city council meeting. Augusta County has had, over the last five years, been able to give their teachers 16.9% raises. Stanton has given their teachers 18% raises. Waynesboro has given their teachers over the last five years 9.7% raises. I mean, I don't know who would find that acceptable, but my neighbors, their teachers, excellent teachers, are driving everywhere to Augusta County because they get paid more. But they pay real estate prices here in Waynesboro because it's cheaper. And one last story to let you think about a little bit when it comes to schools. I recently hosted a book swap about two weekends ago, and I had a young lady come to me who was in second or third grade, and she got a book for baseball. She got a baseball, history of baseball book, and a book about Jackie Robinson. And when I was speaking to her, I said, "You must really love baseball." She said, "No, I don't really know much about it, but my reading specialist loves baseball." And they taught me how to read. And I can't wait to learn things about baseball on my own and go and talk to my reading specialist, this is a student at Berkeley Lynn, about baseball that I learned from the skills that they taught me. Now, is this one of the positions that has been eliminated this year? I sure hope not, because that person has changed this child's life and made them want to read. So I please ask you to keep the tax rate as it is at 90 cents, and let's keep progressing forward to make our city what it deserves to be, and it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lemmons, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please?
Lowell Lemmons, 305 Pelham Drive, Waynesboro. First of all, it was really refreshing to see a presentation tonight. I commend the council and city manager that was so transparent and so realistic. I don't know that we always see those. And you all have obviously done a lot of homework and have shared a lot of data, and, you know, we hear a lot about data-driven decision-making, and so that's a good place to start. And I think the data is pretty compelling in terms of where we need to go. My message would be, raise my taxes. Please raise my taxes. Because we've lived under the burden of potential for a long time here. I've been here about 25 years, and the people that have been here longer tell me it's been the same way, particularly since the industries started to shift. And we need to get out from under the burden of potential and meet that potential with some of the initiatives that Mr. Hamp laid out, and with the revenues and the resources necessary to do that. So I encourage you to take the information you have tonight and make good choices, because the data is pretty clear, and lots of folks have commented on that. I worry about the employees here and the services that all of us expect. You know, no matter which side of the tax equation you rest on, you still want your services, you know? And in fact, sometimes we contradict ourselves as we talk about those two things. We say we want lower taxes, but we still want good services. So I offer you my condolences for trying to figure that out. But I think the services define the city, too. And for some of those folks that are in the greatest need, we need to provide them services, but those come at a cost. And so that equation gets to be very tricky. And I encourage you to try to do both as best you can. But from the tax standpoint, take the data you have and make good choices. In terms of folks that provide those services in Waynesboro, I'm going to maybe use a bad example, because the salary that I'm going to indicate will offend some people. But I felt really bad for our city when the data came out in the paper about the salaries of the city managers and county administrators. To me, that was pretty embarrassing, actually, for the most senior city manager in our area to be well below his colleagues in those other places. The reason I say it's a symptom, I think we could say that about all of our employees. And in spite of that, they're serving the city with courage and with initiative and with lots of loyalty. And I just don't want us to abuse that loyalty. Thank you all.
Ms. Martin, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Darcy Martin. I live at 700 Rife Road, number 6A. I am a product of the Waynesboro school system. My children are also products of the Waynesboro school system. And now that I am retired and I don't have any children, I feel that it's my obligation to pay back. I got a wonderful education. My children got a wonderful education. And I feel that it's my responsibility to allow the children who live now in this town to also experience that. So I would encourage you to keep the rate at the 90 cents per hundred. And a lot has been said about losing people. I'd also like to say that that creates its own fiscal problems. It costs a lot of money to hire a new person, to train a new person, to bring that person on board, and that's just a whole deficit thing. What you want to do is to get those good people, and you want to retain them. And the way you're going to retain them is to pay them fairly. So that's all my comments. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No more speakers, but consider introduction.
Sure. Just want to make sure that was all we had that signed up, but I just want to make sure that folks that would like to speak, who haven't had the opportunity, would be glad to entertain that. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Alex Nolletko. Excuse me. I'm on 890 Hawthorne Lane, and I'd like to bring up a subject that I think is the elephant in the room. Excuse me, my voice is going on me. I was hoping somebody else would bring it up. And that is, not but a few hours ago, our present administration put it into effect a tariff policy that I think is going to affect everybody in this room, including our city budget. And those of you that are here, you're going to be paying on a daily basis, as is the council personally. Now, the difference is, whereas I get a bill twice a year, huge property tax, or water fee, or whatever, our tariff policy is going to nibble away at us, and it's going to be significant. Hopefully, it'll be just for this year. But if you know your history, Thomas Jefferson's policy lasted for about two or three years. I hope it doesn't turn out that this is the case with this one. If it does, then we're really going to be hurting. So please take that into consideration. I understand from our news folks that the average cost for a family of I don't know how much will be between $700 and $800 a year. That's significant. And as I've said, it'll be nibbling away at our wallets. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. Just make sure I get the eyes on here, so we got one more speaker? If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. My name's Keith Donnelly. I live at 561 Chestnut Avenue. I have been a resident of Waynesboro for about 13 years. I do not have kids. I have not had any issues with the law either way. And in fact, a lot of time, we talk about law enforcement as a negative thing, but actually, there's a lot of positive services they offer the community. Nor have I had to use the fire department. That said, I work for a fairly large state agency in Charlottesville, and I have a fairly reasonable-sized staff. And one of the duties I have is to make sure they're fairly compensated, because if I don't fairly compensate them, the revolving door effect is what happens. And essentially, what happens is, people leave. And as someone mentioned before, there's a cost to leaving. There's a cost in downtime between when the person leaves and when you can hire the next person. There's the cost in ramping their skills and their abilities. And then there's also the cost, which is not always known, that you cannot always hire the replacement for the same price that you got, the original person. In my industry, I work in IT, and generally, we see that we have to trade down on skillset in order to maintain cost. So there are real costs to that kind of revolving door policy. And the way to get people to stay is, one, build a culture where people are recognized, can contribute, and like what they do. I think that is pretty clear, that that's the way Waynesboro works. So that's pretty good. But it's also to give them a living wage. And 3% year-over-year increase is essentially what that large state institution gives as the baseline. It's not extraordinary. It's not exemplary. It's just the baseline. The state of Virginia gave 0% last year and 5% this year. That's 2.5% over two years. If you know state employees, you'll know that that's money out of their pockets, but at least it's there, we're kind of working to get caught up. But if you look at the people who are impacted here, so we have city managers... But if you look at the people who are impacted here, so we have city managers, public service workers, fire, police, these are the people that actually provide the services that everyone relies upon, not just me, not just you. In fact, and let's not forget about the teachers, I don't have kids in the city schools. I don't have children at all. But the teachers do provide a public service to me, even though I'm not directly benefited by having kids. And that benefit is, they provide the economic basis for making this an attractive place to live. Having safe environment, low crime rate, responsive fire services, good city parks, and excellent schools is the way to attract a tax base that can expand what the city can do. So I'll quote Mark Twain, "There's lies, damn lies, and statistics." So in answer to some of the statistics that have been quoted here by people up at the podium, is if we're ranked 30 out of 38, or 31 out of 38, 32 out of 38, and then we have to cost-average adjust that based on the budgets of the people in the city, I think there's a point there. But there's also another point. The other point is, where do we want to be? We're not going to get out of the 30s unless we actually invest in the environment, and the community, and our public servants. Thank you for your time.
With that, I will... If you would like to speak, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Scott Seaton, 25 Wellington Place. I live in the county, but I take care of about 400 people who live in the city. Don't mean to speak for them, but I know their stories, and if you give me a minute, I hear. So we need to keep our schools strong. I echo Brett Hayes' comment about that. I've had 25 years of schooling and training. It doesn't make me better than anybody else who works hard here, but I love school. I went to school on Saturdays sometimes, because I was so eager to get to school. I don't echo his comments that, if you don't like the tax increases, move. Property taxes, they hit retirees most. I know it, because I have a lot of retirees in my practice. Their incomes rarely increase at the rate of tax increases, giving them less money to live on and a tighter budget. That includes medications. They often skip their medications when they need to heat their homes. Every year until their taxes increase every year until they can't afford the home they bought when they worked. Property taxes are a regressive tax that takes property from the poor and give it to people who can afford the tax. I know this, because it almost happened to my parents. As California raised their taxes, they almost lost a piece of property that they bought in 1960, but almost lost in about 1979 due to higher and higher property taxes. Property taxes also hit renters the most. Landlords just pass on the increases onto their tenants. High property taxes chase out of town retirees and low-income renters. I don't think we want to be that town. Your machine and tools tax is much higher than the surrounding area, including the county. Why would a business manufacturer that we want to retain here or want to recruit here want to locate in the city? We have two industrial parks in the city that don't have a tenant. Increasing this tax will chase away manufacturers in favor of service-based industries. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Stating your name and address for the record, please.
I will. Good evening. My name is Francine Johnson, and I live at 409 Beta Street, Waynesboro. I've lived in Waynesboro for 60 years, and I'm thankful. I am thankful for a place that's protected by the police. I am thankful for you all as city council members. And I do hope that you all consider lower-income people, people on fixed incomes. Mr. Hamp, you know I call you sometime. And I have all of you in speed dial, I just want you to know that. And I wasn't going to say anything, but I can't sit there and not say that it will affect a lot of us. I was in the neighborhood, taking my little walk about Monday, as a matter of fact, saw one of my neighbors and was talking to her. She had her clothes in a bundle, and I said, "Girl, if you don't get you a washer and dryer." She said, "I have one, but I can't afford the water to wash my clothes." That said, it's a lot of other things. People don't want to come down here because they're on TV. A lot of people say it's not going to make a difference. It's already a done deal. But I will say that it will affect people, and it will affect me. I'm not a higher income. I'm self-employed. I taught preschool at United Church Nursery for 26 years. And it had to been for love. It wasn't for money. That's where God wanted me to be. And now, even though I don't have a six-figure or 20-figure income, I see the children that we taught. I see the children. They are growing up. They've grown up. They have families. And I'm grateful. I say to the Lord, "You know, my work was not in vain, but I work hard now. I live by myself. I have to take care of things. But if the rates and everything goes up all the time, I can't fix the things that need fixing in my home. I don't go on vacations. I can't afford it. I take a long weekend, and I'm satisfied. But I ask that you all please pray for me, people that are like me." There are a lot of them there. And at the bottom of Port Republic Road, we have a homeless shelter. How many people in here have a homeless shelter in their neighborhood? Raise your hand. You can't say that. And have any of you went down there to talk to them? You know, people on hard times and bad luck, and they want to do good. I've talked to them. You know, we've donated stuff. People that I work for, "Franny, do you know anybody who can use this?" There's a lot of people that need help. And I just say, too, "I'm sure you all, and you know you, have earned your raises. I want you to have them. But while you're having them, also consider us." It's just like the widow's mite. Some people are saying, "Raise my taxes, raise my taxes." They can pay it. But like the widow's mite, she gave from all she had. Some people can give from their abundance, and it's fine. That's all I want to say, and thank you.
Great, mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Jennifer Lewis, 113 Iris Drive. I just came back from Highland County, so I'm a little hopped up on maple syrup candy. I wasn't necessarily ready or prepared to talk, so I'm glad that the meeting has gone on long enough that I could make it back from Highland County. But I wanted to just comment on Mr. Seaton's comments is, what drives industry away, what drives retirees away, is the fact that we don't have public transportation. We don't have, you know, we need a good education system. We need to build on what we have now to make sure that we have an educated workforce for manufacturing and industry to come into Waynesboro. We're not going to have that unless we have a good, robust education system. So what drives people to want to come to Waynesboro is, obviously, our beautiful parks, as ex-chair of the Parks and Rec Board for eight years, investing in recreation and tourism and things that make our city beautiful. And what makes our city beautiful is investing. We have to invest and think in the future, think of the future. So it might sound to some people that it's throwing our money away, or that it's not going to be put to good use, but it is going to be put to good use. And I believe that these taxes need to be raised because of all the decades of not having tax increases. So I support what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing. All right. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance as presented?
This is...
On the budget.
I'll make the motion.
Great, thank you. So this ordinance and all others introduced this evening will be considered at our May 28 regular business meeting. And I just want to go out and just personally recognize everyone who came up to speak this evening and to take the time out of their evening to participate in civic life, so appreciate that. Number eight is to hold a public hearing to receive public comments and consider introducing an ordinance amending sections 30-58E 3A, 3A, 30-58E 3B, 86-28A 1, I'm required to say this, folks, so, 26.8A, 28A 2, and 36-139A of the code of the City of Waynesboro to increase water utility service charges, fees, annual rates, and sewer utility service charges and rates. Mr. Hamp?
Look, we have one individual signed up to speak.
Okay.
Mr. Parker Williams.
Mr. Williams, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Of course. Good evening, members of council. My name is Parker Williams. I currently live at 418 Denwoodie Avenue. I've prepared a short statement in relation to the current proposals to raise sewer, water, and stormwater fees while simultaneously increasing personal property tax and failing to adjust the increasing real estate assessment rate. This tells me that the members of this council could probably benefit a little bit by researching basic supply-side economic theories. Tax increases always reduce disposable income. That's a fact. The policies that this council aims to impose benefit the few at the expense of the many. That is the precise opposite of what Western democratic institutions were intended to do. Currently, 17% of people residing in Waynesboro live below the poverty line, and many more operate on a fixed income. This council has forgotten about them. Taking money from those who need it most is logically, fundamentally, and morally irresponsible. Thanks for allocating me the time I was entitled to, and I would hope that this council would employ a little plasticity of opinion. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, so with that, I will close the public hearing. And is there a motion to introduce this ordinance?
So move.
Great, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Number nine, I want to make sure I'm on the right one. Number nine is to conduct a public hearing to receive comment on the recommended annual operating budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020. I'll hear by open hearing.
Okay. Mayor, members of council, we've got a list here. So we'll start with Mr. Kevin Chisnell, followed by Ms. Karen Sellers.
Chisnell, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Chisnell, 235 Elizabeth Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, for this opportunity to speak. During the last public hearing, I wasn't sure if I signed up for the right public hearing. I hope this is kind of a continuation, talking about the budget. But Leslie and I don't want to pay more taxes to the city, but when your city's lived on a credit card for so long that someone has to pay the bill sooner or later, and we have to settle the debt that we owe. I know that half of this increase is for the schools, and I think that's important, that we continue with that and pay those obligations. The same old formulas no longer work, and a culture change is necessary to meet our obligations and to move forward in our city. And I think it's irresponsible to do otherwise. I have a bunch of things here, and I'm not going to take up everybody else's time, but I do want to tell you that I think it's important that we fund the salaries for our workers and to keep them here in Waynesboro, not to train them and let them move on. And I think that all of our workers deserve a competitive living wage. Higher rates are sometimes required. If my family has to pay several hundred dollars more a year, then I will cut some costs in order to make our city better. I think that's important to me and to the future of our city. We have to invest in Waynesboro. And I thank you for your time and service, all of you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Karen Sellers. I actually reside in Weers Cave. I am here to represent the Waynesboro Education Association and its members and fellow educators. And I have some information I'd like to share. Can I approach and hand that to you?
Sure.
Subportal, down the right.
Now, I'll start back over. Thank you. I'm here to represent the Waynesboro Education Association. We would like to address the needs of the schools and staff. That would be those people who meet your children every morning and care for them all day. As was outlined in Katie Hall, one of my current students, in her essay, the schools do need your support. In April, this council actually recognized the salaries for teachers were desperately in need of improvement. As you can see in the data that was just passed out to you, our school system of the local area, nine school systems, is the lowest in pay. Excuse me. Until you reach the 30-year benchmark, at that point, things tend to level out a little. While other divisions have been giving raises to their teachers and staff, they've also been noted to be improving their schools and facilities. Other localities did not reduce the contributions to the schools' educational process or staff while they continued to renovate and even build new schools. You cannot ignore the students and staff while a capital project is in process. Now, I am not familiar with every little detail of how budgets occur. Being a teacher, I sit back and watch. But money invested in the Waynesboro High School project, as desperately as that project was needed, needs to be kept separate from money that's being used in support of the teachers, staff, and students in our school system. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Marcia Geiger, followed by Dr. Van Huss.
Ms. Geiger, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Marcia Geiger, 701 Locust Avenue. I first like to say, excellent presentation, Mike. You know, so comprehensive for everyone here to understand, and thank you so much to all the council for all the work that they put into that. I'm going to make this very short and sweet, and that is that I am endorsing the fiscal budget, because it makes choices, the right choices, those choices for our schools that are so desperately needed, and choices for our city personnel. For many years, I hired personnel for a large bank. The turnover was just like what we talked about here tonight. It is so difficult to find and keep good personnel, so we need to do that. We have to keep what we have and move forward. Planning for our future, and we need to address that, and we also need to plan for our future and implement our comprehensive plan. It is so critical. It is a roadmap to our future. Yes, we've had a large increase over the last two years, but think back how many years ago we kept having no increases. So here we are. Unfortunately, we have to make up for those times. Keep making the right choices and keep moving us forward. Thank you so much for your time.
I know why you all are going to keep us short, because we're dying at the beginning.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
I'll be delighted to. Margaret Christiansen, Van Huss, 1840 Westminster Road. I need to tell you upfront, as I address you, that I am a former educator in this school system. I currently work for a local nonprofit, and I'm a part-time university supervisor for a local university. I tell you that because I need to provide some context. In my former life as an educator, in my present life as part of a nonprofit, I'm pretty familiar with budgeting and the prioritizing that needs to go into that. In my life as a part-time supervisor, I am all over this valley in different facilities, seeing those facilities, seeing their technology, and hearing about their pay rates. I also understand demographics, because in my context of a local nonprofit, there's a fair number, about 60% actually, which is fairly commensurate with the school, that we subsidize to be able to receive our services. In 2018... In 2018, this council spent a considerable amount of money in providing a strategic plan. And I want to compliment you on it, because it was a good plan. It's a doable plan. However, there are a couple of value statements that I'm going to challenge you to think about, and think about specifically to our budget. One of the very first ones that says, "We will put the future of our children at the top of the agenda." And yet, in order for our school system to balance the agenda, the budget that they presented you, they had to make a pretty significant and serious decision, whether they would give pay raises and whether or not they would be able to keep all their staff. Well, pay raises are important, and I can tell you, as the supervisor part of me from the university, I'm always out there recruiting for Waynesboro, always. And I have my students tell me, "It's a great community, but I can't live there. I have student debt. I can go 15 minutes down the road, and I can make several thousand dollars more." That's pretty discouraging when you see really strong teachers and knowing that we're losing them before we ever get them here. Our plan also states that as a community, we will invest in school readiness and other educational improvements. With the cutting of positions, this is what I found out, and I actually talked to our school division about it, every single school is going to be impacted by some teacher loss. Not only that, our reading and math support programs are going to be decreased, our arts programs are going to be decreased, and our PE programs are going to be decreased, which doesn't sound like a big deal, except the research is pretty replete on the benefit of arts programs in math and science. Not only that, we have other community assessments that indicate, as a community, we're a little bit on the plump side. So taking PE away is just counterproductive. The fact that our budget is where it is, where the schools are concerned, seems very counter to the strategic plan which you all, as a city council, has endorsed. The other thing that the strategic plan said was, "By 2027, all seniors will have qualifications to enter the workforce or college." You talk about demographics in that plan, and yet, when I look at the funding portion of that, I have to ask myself, are we really going to be in the position of providing skills to all of those kids for the workforce or college when, in fact, we have had to decrease positions? In every area of the plan, every single one, there is either a specific reference to education or there's a huge inference. So my question to you as council, and frankly, to our community, are we really invested in education as much as we say we are? That's the bottom-line question. Are we, is it really that important to us? The plan specifically states, and I know I'm blinking there, that an essential part of a vibrant and durable local economy is education. Does this present budget begin to make those steps in that direction? Last but not least, and this is kind of the sidebar coming from left field, is it really time for council to work with our school board and revisit that funding formula? Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Stevens, and followed by Scott Seaton.
Hi. I'm Alex Stevens. I live at 2420 Village Drive. I have three children in the Waynesboro schools. Before I start, I want to say thank you to all of you for being so patient tonight. I know it's tough to sit up there. And I'm going to start with a quote like Mr. Hamp did, because I like quotes, too. Albert Einstein said, "The definition of insanity was doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results." By that definition, our school budgeting system is absolutely insane. Every year, the school board stands in this room and asks for more money with seemingly no end. You, the council, listen to that and then take the blame for not waiving the magic wand of taxes and making it all go away. Except, of course, that doesn't work, not by itself. We've talked about a lot of facts and a lot of statistics. Here's a good one. The city of Waynesboro already spends more as a percentage of its local budget on the schools than either Augusta County or Stanton. Augusta County and Stanton have millions of dollars a year more than we do. The city of Stanton's budget is about $8 million a year more than ours. I'm sure Mr. Hamp would like to have $8 million more, and I'm sure many of the things that have been asked for in this room could happen if they were $8 million more. And certainly, as a person who runs a business and understands a world of limited means and of expenses, I understand that one way to solve your problems fiscally is to go out and get more revenue, just something that has been discussed very little in this room and that I'm sure this council is working very hard on. So with that millions of dollars in the gap, it's impossible for us to make up that gap by raising taxes. And let me say that again. There is no amount that the city can raise taxes that will cover the school system budget shortfalls that we've seen, much less the raises and improvements we want to make. Those are seven-figure numbers every year, and there is not enough tax money in this town, period, for that to happen. So we must consider other options. But the ask is the same every year: insanity. Not new thinking, not different ways. To quote another great philosopher, Taylor Swift, "Band-aids don't fix bullet holes, and so we continue to bleed." We all do, and we need to do better. We need you, the council, to stop the short-term bleeding. We need you to find the money in the budget, via taxes or otherwise, to make sure that we have the appropriate number of teachers, aides, and other critical needs in the school system. But beyond this year, we need you to do more, and we need that to start today. We're at the end of a budget process, but as soon as one budget ends, the next one begins, and we need to start thinking about it today. We need to rethink the funding formula from the ground up. We need to work with the schools on a budget that makes sense in the real world of city finances. We need you to work with them together to find some new thinking, because what we're currently doing isn't working. And to the parents like myself in this room, I say to all of us to demand more, to demand more from the school board and to demand more from the city council. It's easy to hear about cuts in taxes and point fingers at this council and previous councils, but it's not that simple. The sooner we realize that, the sooner we can get to work to really fix it. Let's stop the insanity. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Pardon me if I make a mistake here, but it appears to be Jenny Ruby, followed by Bill Kirkendall, 700 Rife Road. Okay.
She was here before.
Mr. Bill Kirkendall.
Excuse the limp. A little stiff.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, Mr. Kirkendall.
Thank you for the prompt. Bill Kirkendall, live at 109 Holland Circle. First thing I'd like to say, I didn't bring anything prepared, because I would really like to compliment this city council for the hard work that they've done. I know you've put time in in many budget sessions. I know you've put time in in retreats, and this is the first time. I've lived here for 13 years. I'm an import. I have not had any children in this school system, although I was a substitute teacher and loved every minute of it. I've never seen more teachers who do more with less, and half the time, they're teaching with their hands tied behind their back. But I would like to compliment you, because this is the first council I've seen that has looked down the road. They don't act necessarily only in the present, and I think this budget is set up so that it does look down the road and so that there are some possibilities there to do better. I think you are paying the price for councils that have been here prior to this, who were reactive and not proactive. I think you're proactive. Their reactive nature cost us money. They cost this city a lot more than money, because you're reaping the benefits of all the bad things that have built up: infrastructure, which we have to repair, teachers, policemen, firemen, city workers who are paid well below the level that they should be paid, who are really dedicated people. And I don't know, I think the chief can verify this. I think it costs, what, $38,000 to train a new police officer?
Seventy-two.
Ah. Maybe it's part-time. I don't know. But in any case, we have people who train, we pay $72,000, and within months, they go somewhere else. We end up the training center for the valley, and that's a problem that has to stop. All I'm saying is, please, look at the comprehensive plan, follow it. I worked in that high school up there for about eight or nine years as a substitute teacher. I watched the ceiling tiles fall down on top of and around kids in a science class. I don't think anybody can deny the fact that a school that was built in 1937 is a little obsolete by now. And I do, I was on the facilities study committee. We, what we did was, we proposed a new school on a new campus, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Would cost $72 million. We can't afford what we have right now, except to do it in steps, and I appreciate that. At that time, I was, I was really a little upset that we couldn't do that. But I'll tell you what, in the meantime, I've seen things change. I've watched the back of the school being torn down, the old gym and the, you know, the industrial arts area, and I think you're going to see more of that. And I think people need to see that in this community, because it is an opportunity to see change really happening. I know Mr. Allen was here on previous boards, so he knows exactly what I'm talking about. He was a part of it. And I'm glad to see that he's here today, and I'm glad to see that he's a part of this council. So I just want to say thank you for the hard work that you're putting in. I do support the 90-cent tax raise. I'm retired, I'm on a fixed income, so is my wife. I didn't have a kid in the school system, but I think it's important enough that everybody support the community, whether you have kids in school or not, whether you have someone who's a police officer or works for the city. That's important, and it has to be, it has to be a top priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Erica Smith and Diane Williams.
Do you mind if I open a window or two? Yeah, absolutely, please. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Erica Smith, member-at-large of the Waynesboro School Board. I live at 1109 Jefferson Avenue here in Waynesboro. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Hamp, and other members of city government. I come to you tonight just at, not just as a member of the Waynesboro School Board, but also as a mother of six children. Tonight, I must convey bleak news to you about the future of the Waynesboro Public Schools. As you know, based on funding, revenue, and expenditures in order to balance next year's budget, we are faced with a $1.2 million deficit. To address this shortfall, we were forced to eliminate many positions and, as a result, reduce programs. The number of staff reductions is now at 22, yes, 22 full-time positions that will be cut. While the number is staggering to hear, I assure you that Dr. Castle and his staff have done everything in their, in their power to minimize the impact of these positions to classroom instruction. The school board is hoping that through attrition and retirements, that we will not have to lay off any staff, but that cannot be confirmed at this time. It appears there will be 15 teachers and seven aides who will not be in the classrooms when students come back to school in August. For our students, we are asking for your help now. We have so, we have so much to be proud of here in Waynesboro. All of our schools are fully accredited. This Saturday, there will be 211 seniors graduating from Waynesboro High School. Many of them are headed to college. Some will be joining the armed services. Others will be entering the local workforce, which is desperate, in desperate need of skilled workers. We must continue the success for students that are here currently and for future graduates. Here are some of the challenges that our students face. Of our, of our nearly 3,000 students, over two-thirds of them come from economically-challenged households. Forty-four of our students are homeless. 218 are learning to speak English. 584 require special needs education. Our educators do not just teach. They feed, clothe, provide health services, and transport our students. Oftentimes, they do it with their own personal time and financial resources, not because it's their job, but because they love our students and are committed to doing whatever it needs for them to succeed. Imagine doing all of this with 22 less educators in our classrooms. Imagine the terrible impact to our children, especially those who need it the most. This is why we are all here tonight, to ask for your help. Please, help us keep our teachers in the classrooms and our staff in the buildings. Please help us help our children. Thank you.
Williams, Ms. Williams, she was next, Diana Williams? If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Diana Williams. My address is 185 South Delphine, soon to be 364 North Bath in Waynesboro. And immediately following Erica, I also want to be fully transparent. I am currently the vice chair of the Waynesboro School Board, as well as a resident of the city of Waynesboro. So especially following this group, I feel like you're going to hear a lot of the same things again, but I think it's important to echo that. I have two requests this evening. The first is for additional funding for Waynesboro Public Schools so that we can effectively operate the division for the upcoming school year. Currently, we are struggling to balance our budget by reducing personnel through attrition and have yet to receive the number of retirement/resignations necessary to achieve our goal. At the start of budget season, our governance body decided that teacher compensation was a top priority. Underlying our thinking was a general feeling that we had protected our students in programming at the expense of our teachers over the years. I want to follow that idea for a moment and speak briefly about the impact of reductions enforced to teacher morale and productivity. Last year, the National Center for Analysis of Longitudinal Data in Education Research published a study about the impact of RIFs. It used data from the Los Angeles Unified School District and Washington State. For both divisions, RIFs appeared to, quote, "negatively impact teacher productivity," end quote. But for Washington especially, the smaller of the two, the findings were that, quote, "The threat of job loss," emphasis added, "may impact teacher motivation and organizational commitment," end quote. Washington teachers were more likely to receive notice of a potential RIF far in advance, and I'd just like to point out as a side note here, this has been hanging over our teachers for about two months now, end quote. The Washington teachers had longer to live with the stress, providing substantial opportunity for current-year employment risk to affect teachers' productivity. When I last addressed council, I reminded you all of our shared values. Tonight, I want to recall, I want you to recall that at the time of the comprehensive plans drafting, Waynesboro schools weren't fully accredited. We are now, and that's due in large part to our teachers. We owe them more than the threat of a position loss or transfer hanging over their heads for weeks on end. And as for our students, we're all well aware of how removing effective teachers and increasing classroom sizes negatively impact student achievement. Now, this is my second request. The aforementioned study proposed a very simple policy solution: the creation of an emergency fund to avoid future RIFs due to budgetary reductions. I'm hopeful that as a long-term solution, council will explore this option with the school board at a future joint meeting as soon as possible. Finally, I'd like to remind everyone that our commitment as a city is to catch up, keep up, and get ahead. So going backward is not an option. Thank you.
So Dr. Carl Stein, and then Ms. Christopherson. Ms. Sarah Christopherson.
Dr. Stein left a little while ago.
Okay. Ms. Christopherson?
Sarah left.
Okay. Mr. Leroy Wells?
He's left.
Ms. Barrett? And Ms. Andrea Walgren?
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Andrea Walgren, and I live at 1732 West Main Street. My family moved here October of 2013, so we're coming up on six years. One of the major things that I investigated in terms of where we were going to move from or move to was the education system. I have a child with special needs. Programming was especially important to me. I made two trips to tour I made two trips to tour two different elementary schools in the City of Waynesboro. Since then, we have had our children in five out of the seven schools. This is Wayne Hills, Westwood, William Perry for the Exceptional Learner Program, Kate Collins, and my daughter is now in Waynesboro High School. So I've seen a lot. I have volunteered in all of those locations. And one of the things that I wanted to talk about in terms of budgeting is what my daughter learned in kindergarten. She came home from kindergarten and told me all about wants and needs. She was very excited, and she had done this exactly appropriately. She, last year, sent her grandmother a Christmas list that was categorized by things that she wanted, things that she needed, and things that she wasn't really sure she wanted but looked interesting. I think this is something that we all do when we are considering what we're spending our money on. In terms of what I see as my wants and needs for our school system, we need fine arts, we need PE, we need classes that aren't overcrowded, we need to keep great educators, we need to keep great programs that meet the needs of our students today and in the future. We need to have our graduates be able to compete statewide and regionally for college, for technical school, and in the job market. I am definitely in favor of the tax rate at 90 cents, and I ask that we prioritize the budget going forward into what we really need. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause).
Mr. Keith Donnelly?
I think Keith has left.
Okay.
That's it, sir. Thank you all very much. I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Great, thank you. Number 10 is to hold a public hearing to receive public comments and consider introducing ordinance approving a conditional use permit requested by the City of Waynesboro, Virginia to allow 178-foot elevated water storage tank in the HI Heavy Industrial District at 1625 South Delphine Avenue and 51 South Oak Lane Tax Map Parcel Number 72-4-16A1. Mr. Judee? And thanks, thanks y'all for coming, too. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I'll give everybody a second to step out if you're not interested in the water tower.[796.48][796.48](laughter) It's thrilling. (laughter) All evening. Now for the main event. Before you, is a request for a conditional use permit with the city as the applicant. This is at our Nature's Crossing Technology Center Industrial Park on South Delphine Avenue. So as a bit of background, many of you are aware that the city acquired the 177-acre property in 2011 with the thought that they would use it to attract a major industrial employer. Unfortunately, the site didn't have adequate road access or utilities to service an employer like that, and in the current environment, you know, competition for manufacturing jobs has become extremely intense. There's communities all across the country that have lost manufacturing employment, and so the game of attracting the remaining manufacturing employment jobs has become very competitive, and cities are often purchasing property and developing it and providing incentives and doing all sorts of things. And so the council had hoped to do the same with this property. The VDOT Southern Corridor Project, which should be completed in 2023, 2022-ish, will bring road access to the site, so we benefited from a smart-scale grant there, and then the city will have to contribute some to that. But there's also the question of utilities and grading that would make the site feasible to develop on. Our Economic Development Department acquired a planning grant from the State Economic Development Commission to study what it would take to bring utilities to the site, what the kind of cost would be, and to develop engineering plans for it. So that's why we're here today with this request. If you're looking at the city from the air, here's Exit 96 off of Interstate 64, South Delphine Avenue. The 177-acre property is located here, and the water tower, or this is where the Southern Connector Road will come through that will connect Delphine and Len Hurst over to Shenandoah Village Drive and Rossar Avenue, and then the tower location would be here at the high ground. The proposed storage tank would have a 500,000-gallon capacity and be 178 feet high. This is a picture of another 500,000-gallon water tank in a different community. The design would be similar. The tank site would be about an acre in size and would have to comply with a site development ordinance. So this is an opportunity and a conditional use permit generally to impose conditions on a project which might have outsized impacts on the surrounding territory. In this case, you would be imposing conditions on yourself as the city, but also I would mention that it does have to comply with the site development ordinance, which, which has standards for landscaping and that type of thing. And then it would have the Nature's Technology Center, Nature's Crossing Technology Center branding on the water tower, so it's proposed at the moment, but that's one of those things that could change anytime, if you wanted to say City of Waynesboro, et cetera. Here again is a map of where the site would be. This is one of the pages out of the plans that Timmons Group prepared for us, so they did full engineering documents to show us exactly what it would take to construct the site. And this is their drawing of what the tank would look like. I've also asked Timmons Group to provide us with images to try to estimate what the visual impact would be, show what the tower will look like as you're driving down the road. So they've done a couple of simulations from different spots on I-64 and then on South Delphine Avenue. Here it is, if you're crossing over the bridge of I-64 over South Delphine and you look south, that's about what the tower will look like. And then if you're on South Delphine Avenue after you've gotten off of the exit ramp, that's what it would look like. And then if you're driving by the tower from the other direction, there will still be a line of trees, will, there'll be probably about 30 or 40 feet of, of current forest growth that'll be left there. But if it's winter and you can't, you can see through the trees, that's what the size of the water tower would be, set back from the road. The staff level, we've concluded that the tower would have no significantly greater impacts than any use allowed by right in the Heavy Industrial District. Again, with a conditional use permit, you're considering whether this is something that would, would, you know, not be more egregious than anything else that could be built in that district, and HI is our most permissive district. I do want to emphasize that one of the goals of this study was to come up with cost estimates. This is a very significant cost to bring utilities to that site, we're estimating upwards of over $10 or $12 million, and that is on the unplanned, unfunded list in our CIP. So the city council will need to initiate a tax increase in bond issue if it chooses to go down this route and construct utilities for the site. But approving it now will allow the funds to be spent once appropriated. I mention that especially if you're in the audience wondering, when will this water tower be built? The answer is, it's not on any schedule currently, so the council, I want to make that clear, the council will have to initiate the project if it wishes to go forward with it. But right now, all you're voting on is the approval. If you were to go forward with constructing the water tower and appropriating the funds, this will allow it to sail through smoothly and quickly. We'll already have the plans drawn. Planning Commission recommends approval with no conditions on a six-o vote. Are there any questions from council?
Any questions, Mr. Judee? All right. Thank you. So with that, I will open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak, sir.
Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing. Are there any questions from members of council? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Great, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Number 11 is to hold a public hearing to receive public comments and consider introducing ordinance amending the city zoning ordinance to allow home stays and short-term rentals few than, than 30 days in all districts where residential uses are allowed by right, and consider introducing an ordinance amending the city code for the City of Waynesboro, Virginia to amend Chapter 78 requiring all operators of home stays and short-term rentals to register with the Commissioner of the Revenue, obtain a business license, and remit transient lodging tax in accordance with the provisions of City Code Section 78-126. Mr. Judee?
Thank you. The Airbnb issue has come up before. Council directed the Planning Commission to look into the, the problem, and we've considered it at probably three or four Planning Commission meetings now. It's hitting communities all over the state. There are a lot of them where it's more controversial, like Harrisonburg or Charlottesville, where they convened whole steering committees to consider the issue and come up with an ordinance. We didn't feel that was a wise use of people's time and money here since it's a smaller issue. We only have maybe 10 or 12 operating in the city. But we did look to the work that many of those other cities had done already in crafting our ordinance, and the Planning Commission considered what would be appropriate for the City of Waynesboro. Short-term rentals are websites, I'm sure that we're all aware, that allow people to rent out spaces in their homes, or rent out their entire home to people for periods of less than 30 days. 30 days is the threshold for what you would consider a regular rental, rental. The largest of those websites is Airbnb.com, which is why people often refer to these as Airbnbs. This is a little screen grab off of Airbnb showing a random weekend in Waynesboro and homes that are, or spaces in homes that are advertised. We have, I'd say, 10 to 15 spaces in private residences that are listed on the site on any given weekend. We've gotten almost no complaints. We have maybe one or two properties that have resulted in complaints to our Building and Zoning Department, but for the most part, all these properties have been operating fairly smoothly so far. In other communities, they have generated a lot of complaints, and that's why it's become a bigger issue, though. They do create a regulatory conundrum for us. They're not mentioned at all in our zoning code. We have no ordinance addressing their existence, and so it's not clear from our ordinance currently what their legal status is. And when folks call the Building and Zoning Department and say, can I do an Airbnb in my house? They just say, we have nothing in our ordinance addressing that, and we can't say yes or no. Virginia passed enabling legislation in 2017 that allowed for localities to create registries and to enact ordinances regulating short-term rentals. And that would affect several chapters of the city code. And so what the Planning Commission has proposed to you today is a change that would allow, that would define and allow these, this operations by right. We're not putting on any of the restrictions that are generally put on it in other cities. We felt that the risks were fairly low for the City of Waynesboro, but we were adding a number of public safety restrictions and the requirement to pay lodging tax. So I'll go over the changes that are proposed here. The first change is to the tax code. It defines home stay and short-term rental separately. A home stay is an owner-occupied home where the owner rents out a portion of it, maybe you rent out your house for a week every year when you go on vacation, or you rent out a room in it occasionally to people. And then a short-term rental is a home that the owner does not occupy, that he lets out, or he or she lets out, for periods of less than 30 days. For now, there's no difference in how the two are regulated, we just put the two definitions into the ordinance, so if you wanted to regulate those things differently in the future. Some cities allow home stays in some districts, but not short-term rentals and vice versa. The changes to the tax code would be a requirement that operators acquire a business license and pay a registration fee of $50 annually to the Commissioner of Revenue. The Commissioner of Revenue would be required to maintain a registry of these short-term rentals. And then short-term rentals would be required to remit the transient lodging tax equivalent to the amount paid by hotels and inns. Then one of the biggest complaints, and the biggest complaints that we get from our own hotel, hotel industry, is that short-term rentals are essentially offering hotel services, but they didn't have to go through and get a business license, they didn't have to have the building official come and check, and they didn't have to go through all those things. And then to the zoning code, we propose to allow home stays and short-term rentals in all legal dwelling units. No exterior signage may be displayed to signify it as an Airbnb, has to look and continue to function as if it's a, a private residence. The operators may not rent to more than one party at a time, more than one contract. You could rent out your whole home to somebody at a time, but you couldn't rent out one room to one person and another room to a different person. That's when we'd say, okay, you're, you're an inn, and you need to operate under the zoning code as an inn. And then we have a number of health, safety, and welfare restrictions, one of them being no prepared food may be served, and that's just, you couldn't anyway through the Health Department. They would be subject to inspection by the building official or the fire marshal once annually, and would have to comply with basic life safety provisions of the building code, including having working smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, and carbon monoxide detectors. Also provisioned that the license could be revoked after three violations. If the short-term rental of the property, if we find that there's three instances in a given year where they have violated the terms of our ordinance, had done something illegal, flown under the radar, or something like that, their ability to, to register and have a short-term rental on the property would be revoked for the following calendar year as well. We believe that short-term rentals fit the city's vision and bring a lot of upsides. The big upsides are added revenue sources for homeowners, especially empty nesters and homeowners that have room to spare. It's also just one more way to incentivize people to repair and maintain their homes, you know, if it's something, another source of revenue that will cause someone to purchase a home and repair it and make it into a contributing structure in the neighborhood again that's adding something to the street. It will add a pretty nominal amount to our tax base. Honestly, the amount of tax that will come out of this ordinance is, is pretty minimal, probably a couple thousand dollars. The main point of the tax provision is that it will maintain parity with the hotel industry. And this could be something potentially in the future, if it grows, it would boost our tourism market. I know when I travel, I usually like to stay in an Airbnb. A number of you said the same thing to me, and the folks who run our Economic Development Department say that when they hear from tourists, that tourists enjoy having good Airbnbs in the city. There are downsides to short-term rentals, but we think that there are most, that we're probably less positioned to experience these downsides than other cities. Some places, there's a discussion of their impact on affordable housing, where there's a very tight housing market and, you know, prices are shooting up. They're worried about people taking houses off the market to turn into Airbnbs. Obviously, we discussed in Waynesboro that we have, still have a lot of undeveloped land, still have a very open housing market, and most of our problems stem from property that's not been invested in enough significantly, so we don't feel this would be a threat to us. There's also the risk of neighborhood nuisances. Again, we've yet to receive much in the way of complaints, but we think that providing this ordinance will at least create a certain control that we can use if we do get a lot of complaints. And then the third big downside that's often argued is the effect on the hotel industry. This is probably the complaint that we hear the most often, since we do have a number of hotels operating in the city. But the ordinance is applying lodging tax and making them get a business license will just create parity there, there will not be any, any difference. So it'll add a very low barrier to entry for operators, that $50 fee. It'll fulfill the city's obligation to protect the health, safety, and welfare of visitors to the city. You know, if you are going to another city, you expect at a certain level that the government there is moderately competent, that you're not going to be at risk of, of having carbon monoxide poisoning, so we've covered those bases. If they just don't like that the shower's not renovated, they can see that from the pictures, and that's something for the market to take care of, but we've covered our basis as far as health, safety, and welfare. And then it gives the city the ability to shut down bad actors, and I think most importantly, clarifies the regulatory environment. It's a problem for us when somebody calls us and says, I'd like to purchase this house, it has a little unit in it, can I do Airbnb in that? And we say, mm, and then they don't know how to operate or how to make decisions. And so this will clarify that environment for them. The Planning Commission recommends approval of this ordinance on a six-o vote. Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Judee?
Question about the food. I mean, usually that's a bonus when looking for Airbnb. The Health Department, are they usually regulating, like, other Airbnbs in other localities?
Just to clarify that, this is, yeah, it's not that you can't make yourself food in the, at the Airbnb, it's just that an Airbnb owner couldn't provide, like, bed and breakfast food service with the Airbnb. If you're going to provide, yeah, and generally, people don't do that on Airbnb. If you're going to sell food, then, then you're a restaurant.
But you can leave food for a guest, like?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. People could, yeah, yeah.
So that is, okay.
Yeah, people can consume their own food. You just couldn't be there cooking them an omelet for breakfast and, and charging them $5 for the omelet or something like that, yeah.
A question about the lodging tax. Educate us a bit on that. Is it a per-night fee? Is it a percentage of the, the?
It's a percentage of revenue. I believe it's 7% if I'm correct.
Six.
Six, 6%.
Okay. So it would be different for a larger space or a smaller space?
Yeah, it would be just based on the revenue, yeah. The $50 fee might affect somebody who only wants to do it very occasionally. That creates a little bit of a barrier to entry. Maybe if you're going to do it twice a year and get total of $200 of revenue, that might be a concern for you. But most folks that do it are doing it more consistently. And I, you know, you could consider that a downside, maybe we should try to open it up to folks that want to just rent their house out once a year, and that $50 thing is prohibitive. On the other hand, you can say that those are the folks that are most likely to be inexperienced and have complaints come from and so forth, so you might want to create a little bit of a barrier to entry, so, however, however you, you look at it.
Any other questions, Mr. Judee? Okay. With that, I will open up the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak.
I will close the public hearing. Any other questions from members of council? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Great, thank you. Number 12 is to hold a public hearing to receive, we're almost done with public hearings, folks, so almost there. Hold a public hearing to receive public comments and consider introducing an ordinance amending the city code for the City of Waynesboro, Virginia to allow electronic signs in residential districts as an accessory to publicly-owned government facilities. Mr. Judee?
Thank you, Mayor. As you might remember, in 2017, we had an ordinance amendment that clarified that electronic signs were banned in residential districts. This is an electronic changeable, changeable copy sign we called in the ordinance, it's any kind of video sign or, or, you know, electronic thing where there's moving images and, and words. and words. In the zoning code previous, prior to 2017, it was unclear. It stated that they were allowed in commercial districts, or they were allowed in all non-residential districts, but it didn't state that they weren't allowed in residential districts. We clarified that. But the immediate concern is that the Waynesboro Public Library, which is in a residential district, wants to erect a sign on Wayne Avenue. We have a sign ordinance that's fairly detailed, and it goes into some detail on what the purpose of it is. Your purpose of your sign ordinance is to protect public safety by ensuring that traffic signs and devices are easily visible, to ensure that signs are designed and installed and maintained in a way that protects life, health, property, and safety, support the desired character of Waynesboro, and also to control, you know, what's grabbing people's attention as they drive along and look at our scenic natural beauty, and to address ongoing technological advancements in the sign industry that continue to result in new sign types. And this is sort of a new sign type that we're dealing with more often. Here's the current ordinance. A changeable copy sign is any sign that allows the copy to change, lighted or unlighted with detachable letters and figures, or the message may be electronic. Electronic signs that clarifies are prohibited in residential districts, number D there. We do have a lot of these signs around the city. Here's one that's at the, I believe, Celebration Church of God on North Delphine Avenue that's grandfathered currently. So the ordinance would not affect signs which are already existing. Here's one that's at the Waynesboro Garden Center. It's one of the McDonald's, they're often at banks, that type of place. So council expressed, and council initiated this rezonings, so you all are very aware of it, that they wanted to allow the library to erect the sign, but didn't necessarily want to allow signs to proliferate, you know, across the city and residential districts. And so the proposed change is to say that electronic signs are prohibited in residential districts except as an accessory to publicly-owned government facilities. So this would allow electronic signs to be placed in residential districts if it's on a school property, or a library, or maybe a social services building, but would not allow it at, like, an apartment complex, or a church, or another privately-owned facility. The planning commission considered this ordinance and recommended approval on a six-o vote, but added a couple of amendments based on their concerns about the impacts in residential districts. They suggested that signs on or adjacent to residential districts should be switched off between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. They also suggested that signs on or adjacent to residential districts should be kept below whatever reasonable brightness limitations the staff should research and recommend to council. Now, we've done some research, and we provided you with a couple options ordinance-wise on how that could be done. I will say that if we want to follow through on number two and put a brightness limitation, that we would probably need to delay this vote by another meeting, because that ordinance has only been advertised once now in its current form. This one's pretty self-explanatory, between 10:00 and 6:00 a.m. That's been advertised. We can put that in the ordinance today if you want to introduce that. As far as the brightness limitation, here's where we're at on that. Luminance of electronic signs is commonly measured in nits. A nit is one candela, basically a candle power per square meter. Your typical LCD TV or computer screen is somewhere in the 200 to 500 nits range. And I saw varying estimates for how many nits the sun is, but it's a lot. The model ordinance, model ordinance is that we've seen generally limit signs to 5,000 nits during daylight hours and 250 nits at night. And in order to enact that, you usually need to require that there's a light sensor on the sign, which comes on a lot of electronic signs anyway, that detects when that brightness should shift based on the ambient light. The big issue for us is staff. It's a fine ordinance, and I think we could put that into the code if we want. The big issue for us is that we currently don't have the equipment or training to test for luminance. We've looked into the equipment a little bit, and it's moderately pricey. I wouldn't say it would blow any budgets, but it would be an additional cost, and we'd have to go figure out how to use that. The ordinance that we provided for you as an example would require the installer to certify that the sign has been tested, and that's similar to a lot of other issues we have with streetlights and so forth, that the installer has to certify that this is below whatever the code threshold is. The only risk there is if someone complains, says, "Isn't that sign way brighter than it should be?", and really gets on you about it. Zoning department is not currently equipped to go out and test that sign and check that out. Again, if council wishes to pass this amendment, the 10 to 6:00 a.m. amendment can be passed today. If you want to pass the brightness amendment, the public hearing will need to be continued and the ordinance introduced at the next meeting. Is that correct, Melissa? Okay. Any questions on that?
So with the brightness, being it's shutting off at a certain time and coming on at a certain time, that really won't have a lot of bearing.
Yeah, it would really only affect sort of the nighttime hours between those. Yeah, I would say that both of those amendments get at the same goal probably, but maybe in slightly different ways.
Great. While I know familiar that the sign is, through a partnership with the Friends of the Library, it's still city property, taxpayer property and otherwise, and so if we're unhappy with the brightness, we could certainly make accommodations.
Presumably, this ordinance, you know, states only on publicly-owned government facilities, so you'd have a level of control over whatever, whatever did go on, yeah.
Right. Okay. I was just trying to think of, is the brightness necessary, entirely necessary, when we can essentially control the brightness? Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, good point.
So with that, I will open the public hearing. So we have four individuals signed up to speak, the first being Zaire Mahmood. Zaire, do we need to hear from you? Can we hear from the other individuals?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
I have speakers, the citizens.
So, and actually, just, if you, Mr. Mahmood, just as a point of order, Ms. Michelson, so our city charter says that if we run past 10 o'clock, I think that we have to have some sort of...
We have to have a unanimous motion to continue the meeting past 10 a.m.
Okay, anticipating there's not, that we can't do that, have four speakers in five minutes, should we?
It'd probably be wise to have a motion now if we're inclined to...
Maybe three in five.
Yeah, if you wouldn't, if you wouldn't mind. So could I have a motion to extend the meeting to 10 to satisfy the rest of the agenda this evening?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, supposed. The motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Mahmood, if you could.
Thank you. Mayor Shored, I need to take a break for a few minutes.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, could we, could we get two minutes?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna refreeze this.[1034.12]
Address for the record, please.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Zaire Mohammed and I live at 104 Buckingham Place, Waynesboro. I'd like to divert your attention tonight from budget and tax rates and all that to a different subject, something that will not require city funding. That should make Mr. Hump happy. I'm talking about the electronic message board, LED or EMC for short. EMCs are computerized, remotely programmable visual communication devices. They are capable of storing and displaying multiple messages in dozens of formats in at varying intervals, speeds. You could control the speed of the message as they rotate. Message boards allow us to change messages frequently, but without the cost of replacing, missing and broken letters, that's what we do now, and without the physical labor involved. Imagine staff going during winter on the snow or rain and putting those little signs in the corner of Wayne and 14th Street, or the heavy, strong winds knocking down those small signs. EMCs are signs of progress, signs of vitality, signs of innovation. In February of 2016, we are talking of 2016, we finalized the RFP for design. We worked with zoning office, we worked with the finance office, making sure that specifications of the sign meets all the requirements of the signage ordinance. The finance office reviewed our RFP and they made some changes in regard to procurement laws and regulations that they were supposed to purchase the sign. And the Friends of the Library at the time made a commitment to reimburse the city for the purchase of the sign. Many planners and community leaders in the past thought signs should be purely for identifying places of business, not for advertising. Only recently have communities begun to learn that there's a direct link between signs and revenue generated to the city via taxes. Many communities are beginning to look at their sign ordinances as tools used to help rebuild a declining community. If signs are working for business models, it will work for the city services. Also statistical analysis of the relationship between on-premise signs and traffic safety conducted by signage foundation and corporation, Washington DC concluded, there is no statistically significant increase in crashes associated with the on-premise signs. We hope that the City Council will consider amending the city's signage ordinance to allow the acquisition and installation of electronic message center on the grounds of the library, on the west side of the building, along the Wayne Avenue, but perpendicular to Wayne Avenue. The sign will cause no inconvenience or negative impact on the homes across from the street, across from the library. The sign will be shut down at night. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kevin Ryan. Mr. Ryan, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kevin Ryan. I live at 1007 Fairway Drive in Waynesboro. I'm the president of the Friends of the Library. The Friends have a long history of responding with cash that we raise in response to library needs not met by its ordinary budget. Examples include our participation in the renovation of the library several years ago, the famous garage door project, which Mr. Hamp remembers, down at the basement level, or the ground level, as Zaire likes to say, of the library. More common examples are equipment and program purchases, which we make throughout the year on a as-needed basis. Friends have been working with the library, the library board of trustees and the city staff on considering and securing a suitable electronic sign for the library. This project was first mentioned to us as a way of facilitating the library's mission, which fundamentally is about communicating and delivering information to the community. With the sign, the library could inform about its important programs and events. If it wished to do so, the city could use the sign to inform about things such as snow closures of schools or government offices. Sign will be quite sophisticated and the sign can be controlled in different ways that meet some of the items that you were discussing with regard to the proposed ordinance. Simplest thing to understand, of course, is to turn it off at night. The sign would represent a quantum leap over the two small sandwich board signs that the library has used in the past. I think we can all agree that those signs are really not satisfactory. The project came to a halt when council amended the city code to provide that electronic signs would not be allowed in residential zones. Now, if the city wants to consider having a suitable and effective electronic sign for its library, the Friends will be pleased to work with the city to help secure that result. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Allison Schultz. Ms. Schultz.
Sorry.
Hey, he's fine. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Allison Schultz. I live at 1130 Fairway Drive in Waynesboro. Essentially, I'd like to say that the library provides a very strong support system for the educational system in our community. We moved here from somewhere else, I'm Yankee, but we moved almost 20 years ago. One of the first things we did was join the library and after that, excuse me, joined the Friends of the Library, and we've been active in the Friends of the Library ever since then. I go to the library at least twice a week, and when I walk in, to my right is the Gene Custon Teen Center. Then, there's a big play area for children. Both are always busy, busy, busy. Small children learning about the importance of books, the importance of reading, and their parents learning how to teach that to them. I enjoy the library also because it has a book group, a knitting group. I'm trying to think of all the things. I had their little, if you go there, they have a pamphlet that you can take that shows what is available for the next several weeks, and I forgot to bring it. But my main point is that the sign for the library will allow us to advertise to the community the many, many programs that are available that most people don't know about. And I would like the general community to know about those programs and to take advantage of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Lowell Lemmons.
Lowell Lemmons, 305 Penn Drive. Get two for the price of one tonight. I think I signed up for the wrong sheet before. Now, I'm glad I spoke to the other topic as well, but I'm here to support the change in the ordinance. I think it would benefit the library programs significantly. Anybody who works in public service of any kind and in public agencies know that you hear often, "Well, if I'd only known about that, if I'd only known, I would have done it." Why didn't you get that word out, even though you may have distributed it 1,000 times through every media outlet you thought you knew about? So we think this would be an enhancement to that effort to try to get the word out about programs and to inform the public about things going on at the library, but even beyond that, things in the wider government community, anyway. We certainly had talked about the opportunity for other agencies to put notices there and so forth. So I'm endorsing that. I was the previous chair of the Board of Trustees of the library when this started, so I came to some degree to just offer to answer questions if you had any. Zaire has given you the history, and I don't need to recount that, but if you have questions, I'll be glad to answer those. And otherwise, I'll defer my time to Ann Coleman, who's the current chair, if there's anything. Thanks. I won't defer my time then. I'll stay up here a while longer. Yeah. I'll sit down for money. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. All right. We've closed the public hearing. Any questions, members of council? Okay, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make it.
Great, thank you.
Can I get clarification from council on what ordinance you're introducing with or without the which commission amendments?
You need to make a motion.
So we've had one motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to amend the code without the lumon.
But with the 10 to 6.
With the 10 to 6, but without the lumon.
With the 10 to 6, but without the brightness limitation. Great.
Figure that out on our own. Okay, great. All right, item 13 is to consider introducing, no more public hearings tonight, so. Item 13 is to consider introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 82, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 1, in General Section 82-1 and 4, inoperable and abandoned vehicles, Section 82-121, 82-131-137, and 82-151-156 of the city code of Waynesboro, Virginia. Ms. Michelson.
Actually, I'm going to take this one, Mayor Short, thanks. So to be clear with the council, this focuses on enforcement of abandoned and inoperable vehicles in the public right-of-ways. In various cases where the police have pursued enforcement, recognizing the emphasis on this matter, we have come to learn that the city code has not been updated sufficiently to reflect authorities originating in the state code. So to a great extent, this is a housekeeping matter to align our local ordinances, local code with that of the code of Virginia. Equal importance, though, is the ordinance affords the department the ability to contract with private companies in addition to the towing and removal, more standard tasks performed by the private companies, but also to store the inoperable and abandoned vehicles found in public right-of-ways. And in doing so, once an enforcement, a towing, has occurred, it then becomes the responsibility of the private tow firm to handle the storage and the final disposition of the vehicle and relieves those responsibilities from the local government. We believe it would be more efficiently handled, more effectively handled by the private sector.
Great, thank you. Any questions concerning the staff report? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Great, thank you. Item 14A is to consider introducing an ordinance transferring a portion of unspent funds in the assessor's department in the amount of $3,062 to the treasurer's department for interest owed on an erroneous tax assessment. Mr. Hamp.
So this was, as the title indicates, additional interest on an erroneous tax assessment funded by the treasurer's office. In the spirit of cooperation, after discussion, it was determined that the expense more fairly be borne by the assessor's office, so we're transferring funds from the assessor to the treasurer to build good relations and accurately reflect the nature of the expense.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Item 14B is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a Virginia Department of Forestry grant in the amount of $6,000 to the general fund to reimburse for tree removal expenditures in these streets departments. Mr. Hamp.
Pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
I'll make it.
Thank you. Item 14C is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $21,509 of insurance proceeds to the general fund for repairs to the damaged fire engine. Mr. Hamp.
This was damage to the fire engine. The accident was not the fault of the municipal driver.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you. Item 14D is to consider an ordinance appropriating a portion of the courthouse security reserve in the amount of $6,046 to the general fund to purchase video conferencing equipment for the circuit courtroom. Mr. Hamp.
If there are questions.
Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you. Item 14E is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of unassigned fund balance in the general fund in the amount of $30,900 to the general fund for groundwater remediation services at the landfill. Mr. Hamp.
We have identified a seepage. With the recent 18 months or so of persistent and high rain, or heavy rain, we are finding the water table rising throughout the community. We have a suspicion of a seepage, or we've identified a seepage at the landfill. This appropriation will fund some engineering, technical services to confirm that it is in fact groundwater, or determine, we hope not the case, that it has leachage characteristics.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
I'll make it.
Thank you. Communication correspondence. Mr. Hamp.
So I have two items this evening. The first, to draw attention to the fact that sort of a companion recognition to the police week that we're celebrating, Police Officers Memorial Day on Wednesday and the police week this week. The week of the 19th is National Public Works Day, and the staff participated in Riverfest and had some of the festival elements and pub ed elements of what normally is at Public Works Day at that festival. In addition, during the week of the 19th, staff will be conducting tours of our treatment facilities and tours of the mulberry wetlands, and information about those opportunities is available on the website. Also on the website, please take notice of the customer satisfaction survey with respect to our refuse collection and solid waste programs. You're likely aware that we are going through a comprehensive evaluation of our solid waste program, and an element of that evaluation is soliciting feedback from our customers. And there's a very simple customer satisfaction survey on the website that we would encourage any customer of our recycling program or solid waste collection program to participate. And that's all I have this evening, sir.
Great, thank you. Do we have a citizen comment period?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Bill Krasztek.
My Ben, clean it up again?
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record again.
I surely will. I'm still Bill Krasztek and at 1321 Hollands Road. Couple of items, I have something prepared, but speaking of something that you folks have just chatted about, the inoperable abandoned vehicles that you just passed. I served on the grand jury last year, and two cases came up, which bothered me a bit. In both cases, folks had lost their cars. They were either stolen, whatever, and considered abandoned. In one case, by the time the person found the car, it was destroyed. The second case, the person to whom it was towed to or to business, they raised their fee, you know, monthly, daily fee so much, they couldn't afford to get their car back, and they lost their cars as well. I asked Mr. Ledbetter, who was there at the time, why don't we check the VINs or something like that in the city when we do this? He says, "That's not our proper procedure." So I'd just like to throw that into your, you know, what you mentioned there. The items I did prepare to come about was, last month, before council, I mentioned a stoplight at Rossar and Wyndegrove in the brevity of the traffic light for the amount of traffic coming through. I've not heard from anybody on council, but would appreciate some feedback from somebody if you've looked into it, et cetera. Thank you. Second item, and that's related about the Rossar Avenue and 13th Street intersection. In article in the news leader in November 28, 2017, Mr. Jim Shaw, deputy manager of Waynesboro, quoted as saying, "Comparing the roundabout to installing traffic lights, both these options would cost about the same to install, about $420,000." But I noted in the May 5, 2019, News Virginian, the cost was now being quoted as $579,000. That's a $159,000 increase, but the article also said the project wouldn't begin until 2023. That's a long, tiring way out. So I'd just like to ask the city, would please reevaluate the proposed roundabout? And that's assuming the paper got their comments correct.
Great, thank you.
Sure thing. Next, about today, Alex Stevens was correct here when he said, "We come here every year, or at least the last 20 years that I've been coming in here, with the same problem. People in Brandon Hills impel them, say, 'Raise my taxes.'" Well, they can afford it because they live there and have discretionary income, and you have folks like Francine Johnson in her neighborhood and says, "You know, we can barely make ends meet in there." You know, it's the same problem. Don't have any answers, lots of questions. My high school was built 1927, where I came from, and it's still there and has great schools, rates it an eight. Waynesboro School, the high school, is only rated a three. It's the lowest in the area. Why? I'm just opening it up. Three. Why does Rosenwald, which is a school built in the 30s, you know, have such a great appearance? The quotes, as we're quoting people today, "When I walk in there, it's so bright, I've got to wear shades." I mean, it is awesome, and just a comment. Let's see. Four. In 1990, we had two proud but decaying hospitals. Where would we be if we kept putting money into them as they, and left them where they were? And number five, why do we have three school systems within five miles of Fishersville? Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you very much.
That's it. Ms. McGuffin, but I don't see Ms. McGuffin's here.
Okay, great. All right. That is it. So item 17 is to conduct a closed session at the request of the city attorney in order to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by our attorney as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A8 of the state code, and the subject matter of the meeting is the budget and tax rate ordinance. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? It's a roll call vote.
Mayor Short?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Henderson?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman Hostetter?
Aye.
All right. That is it. So item 17 is to conduct a closed session at the request of the city attorney in order to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by our attorney as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A8 of the State Code, and the subject matter of the meeting is the Budget and Tax Rate Ordinance. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? It's a roll call vote?
Mayor Short?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Henderson?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman Hostetter?
Aye.
Each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements under the Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the council. Great, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? It's a roll call vote?
Mayor Short?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Henderson?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman Hostetter?
Aye.
All right, we're reconvene. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I will make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, and we adjourn. Thank you.